Anytime you wish then Mayor Stewart.
Yeah.
Thanks everyone, so we have quorum and I'm gonna call this public hearing of Tuesday, December 8th to order. Thanks everybody for your patience. For the purposes of conforming, we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on, council, and if we, of course, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so we need to make sure we always have quorum, and if I'm in doubt, I will do a roll call. This meeting is convened by electronic means under ministerial order M192, so we're participating by phone. If any of our connections are lost through this meeting, we'll pause recess until the connection is restored. If you're gonna leave the meeting, please let the clerk know, so we can maintain quorum. A video council member speaking, presentations and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. And members can also listen to the proceedings via live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out by, on Twitter @VancityClerk. Presentations, amendments and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Lastly, following updated guidance issue on December 4th, in-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the provincial health order. Therefore, speakers who will be providing comments to council will be by phone and a moderator will assist in patching these speakers through when the turn comes up. Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb. Councillor Weeb. He was on the line earlier, councillor Boyle.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly.
Present.
And councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young. And I just see councillor Dominado, the meeting has quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much, we of course acknowledge we're on the traditional unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Sabo tooth people, and thank for their generosity to all who live on their lands. And we want to thank the staff, clerks, all the staff in the city who make such a great contribution and help keep the wheels rolling on, as we make our way through COVID. Some announcements, speakers of course have five minutes to make their comments, should limit their comments to the merits of the report and should say whether they are support or oppose the recommendations and indicate if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers can only speak once and should follow along on Twitter @VancityClerk for updates on the progress of the meeting, so they don't miss their turn to speak. Of course, you can always submit comments on the agenda items on our online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearing-comments. And that link will be tweeted out. Speakers who pre-register with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20 second delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next and I'll help speakers through their slides to make sure everything's synced up. If we don't hear from hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene the meeting on Tuesday, December 15th at 6pm.
Pardon the interruption, Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
Just because of how the meetings are working out this week, we would be able to reconvene instead tomorrow at 6pm if we don't finish tonight.
Okay, that sounds good to me. So when we'll, when we recess, if we recess, we'll indicate that at the end of the meeting. So it would be tomorrow, just if you're wondering if your item is later on. Tomorrow at, you said clerks, you said 6pm?
That is correct.
Great, okay. So we're a quasi judicial body here, we're only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation, and we can ask clarifying questions from speakers, applicant or technical advice from staff, but we should save debate for after the close of speakers. We can approve the applications that come before us, we can refuse them, or we can defer for future consideration. So let's move to the first item, which is updated zoning regulations over zero emission, zero emissions residential buildings. And we'll see if anybody has a conflict in this item. And if you don't, I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the application. Please go ahead clerks.
This is an application by the general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw for one-story to three-story residential buildings to allow the director of planning to exclude up to 2.3 square meters per dwelling unit from floor area to accommodate zero emissions mechanical equipment for heating or hot water and to permit an additional 0.15 meters in height if the roof contains at least 0.35 meters of insulation. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. This represents all correspondence received up to 5pm today.
Great, thanks so much. So if there are any speakers that wish to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, code 25035 hashtag to get on the list, and that number is on the live stream and be tweeted out. We have Salem Black from the Urban Design and Sustainability on the phone to present the application. I, yeah, I'm just looking here, we don't look like, it doesn't look like we have any speakers, council. So we could waive this unless, does anybody on council want to see this presentation?
Councillor Carr, move to waive the presentation.
Okay, thanks so much. Let's just waive it and move on, I didn't hear any other voices. So if there, so maybe we can go directly to questions.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I did get myself on the queue.
I was just looking for a verbal indication. If you want the application, if you want the presentation, we can definitely do it, councillor Hardwick.
Forgive me, I really would appreciate this information.
No problem at all. So we're gonna move to staff who will go through the presentation, which I believe is nine slides.
Yes, it is. Good evening, Mayor and council, are you able to hear me all right?
We sure can.
Excellent. So this is Shailand Luck, I'm a senior green building planner in the sustainability group. With me tonight is Sean Pander, who's the manager of the green buildings program in sustainability as well. I'll try to make this brief. We're here today to propose some updated regulations for zero emissions residential buildings. Just for context, back in April, council approved some new energy and emissions requirements in the Vancouver building bylaw. That's not the subject of this report. But in the course of doing that, they heard some feedback from builders who had concerns about accommodating these new zero emissions requirements, whether the equipment or the insulation. And at that time, council did direct staff to ensure that the new requirements didn't wind up reducing the buildable interior space in these new one to three-story residential buildings. So we are here tonight to propose just two changes. One, we would like to offer an exclusion from floor area to provide extra space for that zero emissions mechanical equipment. The draft wording is simply giving the director of planning the ability to exclude up to 25 square feet per dwelling unit to accommodate the equipment. The second change is to address the greater insulation that will be required in the Vancouver building bylaw, and that's to create a height exclusion in order to accommodate the most common roof insulation materials that we see. So that tends to be fiberglass or rock wool bad insulation, it's got a certain volume to it. And the proposed text change there is simply to allow an additional six inches of height if the roof does contain at least 14 inches of insulation. So we're trying to tie the allowance of the extra height to the fact that the roof would contain more insulation. In the course of developing these recommendations, we did consult with staff internally. We also consulted with the public through a survey on Shape Your City. And we also let various building and heritage groups know what we were proposing. We did not hear serious concerns from either of the folks that we consulted with. We did hear some positive feedback in the form of the public survey along the lines of the proposed changes look like they would be effective, but there was some desire for more vigorous action on climate change. Not unfortunately within our scope, but we thought we'd pass it on as one of the bits of feedback that we heard. In terms of implementation, we would like to start offering this in January. We will provide a bulletin that's issued by the director of planning, so it doesn't require council consideration. The director of planning would do that on his or her own volition, but it would give guidance on how to do the change. Towards the end of the year, we would reassess how implementation was going and if, consider if any changes were needed at that time. So the recommendation that we'd like to make is for these changes that will help accommodate the improvements to the Vancouver building bylaw. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Council, we don't have any applicants here, so this is just a time where you can ask questions to staff and there are no speakers, but I do have to go through the whole routine. So I have councillor Hardwick, questions to staff for the five minutes.
Yes, thank you very much, and it sounds infinitely sensible. What, if any, are the cost implications to the builder or the homeowner?
There are no cost implications to these zoning changes. These zoning changes give the director of planning the ability to offer a bit more space if the applicant wishes it. These changes give the builder the ability to use a bit more height if they need it to build these insulation, but the changes to the zoning do not cause more cost to be incurred.
Excellent answer, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick, councillor Carr.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions, I'm just prepared to move the recommendations.
Okay, we're not quite there yet, we do have to go through the, there may be public who wish to speak to this, so perhaps we can wait as I go through my three calls. I do have, so if people are interested on this, 1-833-353-8610, participant code 25-
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb. Councillor Weeb. He was on the line earlier, councillor Boyle.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly.
Present.
And councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young. And I just see councillor Dominado. The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. We of course acknowledge we're on the traditional unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh people and thank for their generosity to all who live on their lands. And we want to thank the staff, clerks, all the staff in the city who make such a great contribution and help keep the wheels rolling on as we make our way through COVID. Some announcements. Speakers of course have five minutes to make their comments. Should limit their comments to the merits of the report and should say whether they are support or oppose the recommendations and indicate if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers can only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Of course, you can always submit comments on the agenda items on our online web form at vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And that link will be tweeted out. Speakers who pre-register with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20 second delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next and I'll help speakers through their slides to make sure everything's synced up. If we don't hear from hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene the meeting on Tuesday, December 15th at 6:00 PM.
Pardon the interruption, Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
Just because of how the meetings are working out this week, we would be able to reconvene instead tomorrow at 6:00 PM if we don't finish tonight.
Right, okay. That sounds good to me. So when we'll, when we recess, if we recess, we'll indicate that at the end of the meeting. So it would be tomorrow, just if you're wondering if your item is later on. Tomorrow at, you said clerks, you said 6:00 PM.
That is correct.
Great, okay. So we're a quasi judicial body here. We're only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. And we can ask clarifying questions from speakers, applicant, or technical advice from staff. But we should save debate for after the close of speakers. We can approve the applications that come before us. We can refuse them or we can defer for future consideration. So let's move to the first item, which is updated zoning regulations for zero emission, zero emissions residential buildings. And we'll see if anybody has a conflict in this item. And if you don't, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the application. Please go ahead, clerks.
This is an application by the general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw for one story to three story residential buildings to allow the director of planning to exclude up to 2.3 square meters per dwelling unit from floor area to accommodate zero emissions mechanical equipment for heating or hot water and to permit an additional 0.15 meters in height if the roof contains at least 0.35 meters of insulation. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great, thanks so much. So if there are any speakers that wish to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610. Code 25035 hashtag to get on the list and that number is on the live stream and be tweeted out. We have Salem Black from the Urban Design and Sustainability on the phone to present the application. I, yeah, I'm just looking here. We don't look like, it doesn't look like we have any speakers, council. So we could waive this unless, does anybody on council want to see this presentation?
Councillor Carr, move to waive the presentation.
Okay, thanks so much. Let's just waive it and move on. I didn't hear any other voices. So if there, so maybe we can go directly to questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I did get myself on the queue.
I was just looking for a verbal indication. If you want the application, if you want the presentation, we can definitely do it, councillor Hardwick.
Forgive me, I really would appreciate this information.
No problem at all. So we're going to move to staff who will go through the presentation, which I believe is nine slides.
Yes, it is. Good evening, Mayor and council. Are you able to hear me all right?
We sure can.
Excellent. So this is Shyland Black. I'm a senior green building planner in the sustainability group. With me tonight is Sean Pander, who's the manager of the green buildings program and sustainability as well. I'll try to make this brief. We're here today to propose some updated regulations for zero emissions residential buildings. Just for context, back in April, council approved some new energy and emissions requirements in the Vancouver Building Bylaw. That's not the subject of this report. But in the course of doing that, they heard some feedback from builders who had concerns about accommodating these new zero emissions requirements, whether the equipment or the insulation. And at that time, council did direct staff to ensure that the new requirements didn't wind up reducing the buildable interior space in these new one to three story residential buildings. So we are here tonight to propose just two changes. One, we would like to offer an exclusion from floor area to provide extra space for that zero emissions mechanical equipment. The draft wording is simply giving the director of planning the ability to exclude up to 25 square feet per dwelling unit to accommodate the equipment. The second change is to address the greater insulation that will be required in the Vancouver Building Bylaw. And that's to create a height exclusion in order to accommodate the most common roof insulation materials that we see. So that tends to be fiberglass or rock wool bad insulation. It's, it's got a certain volume to it. And the proposed text change there is simply to allow an additional six inches of height if the roof does contain at least 14 inches of insulation. So we're trying to tie the allowance of the extra height to the fact that the roof would contain more insulation. In the course of developing these recommendations, we did consult with staff internally. We also consulted with the public through a survey on Shape Your City. And we also let various building and heritage groups know what we were proposing. We did not hear serious concerns from either of the folks that we consulted with. We did hear some positive feedback in the form of the public survey along the lines of the proposed changes look like they would be effective. But there was some desire for more vigorous action on climate change. Not unfortunately within our scope, but we thought we'd pass it on as one of the bits of feedback that we heard. In terms of implementation, we would like to start offering this in January. We will provide a bulletin that's issued by the director of planning, so it doesn't require council consideration. The director of planning would do that on his or her own volition. But it would give guidance on how to do the change. Towards the end of the year, we would reassess how implementation was going and if, consider if any changes were needed at that time. So the recommendation that we'd like to make is for these changes that will help accommodate the improvements to Vancouver Building Bylaw. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Council, we don't have any applicants here, so this is just a time where you can ask questions to staff and there are no speakers, but I do have to go through the whole routine. So I have councillor Hardwick questions to staff for up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. And it sounds infinitely sensible. What, if any, are the cost implications to the builder or the homeowner?
There are no cost implications to these zoning changes. These zoning changes give the director of planning the ability to offer a bit more space if the applicant wishes it. These changes give the builder the ability to use a bit more height if they need it to build these insulation. But the changes to the zoning do not cause more cost to be incurred.
Excellent answer. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick. Councillor Carr.
Oh yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions. I'm just prepared to move the recommendations.
Okay, we're not quite there yet. We do have to go through the, there may be public who wish to speak to this, so perhaps we can wait as I go through my three, three calls. I do have, so if people are interested on this, 1-833-353-8610, participant code 25035 hashtag. And that is the first call. And I'll just ask the clerk, anyone on the line, because we have no one in chambers because of the new COVID regulations.
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, there is no one on the line.
Okay, so I'm going to make a second call. The number 1-833-353-8610, participant code 25035 hashtag to get on the list. And I will check again, clerks, to see anyone, anyone online.
Just checking. Still no one on the line, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to make my third call for this item. And so the number's on Twitter or on the live feed if you want to get in, participant code 25035 hashtag. And then council will take a five minute break to give people a chance to call in. It is 6:30, so we'll come back at 6:35. 6:35, so I'm going to check with the clerks. See if.
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and we have no one on the line.
Okay, thanks so much. Just seeing, I only see one, two, three, four, five. Okay, I see six of us on video, so we're good. And great, so. So that's it for speakers, council. So we're going to close the speakers' list now. And since we haven't had many public comments or any after 5:00 PM today, we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to decision. Staff, any closing comments? Wait, almost there. I just got a little bit more to read. Any closing comments, staff?
No, Mayor and council, we do not.
Thanks. Councillors, any questions for staff? Sorry, I just have to go through this, council. It's a legal requirement and now we can have a decision. We can move this.
Move the recommendations, councillor Carr.
Second foil.
Okay, thanks. And yes, councillor De Genova?
Oh, sorry, I just wasn't sure if I was muted. Mr. Mayor, if you could add me to the queue, please, just to ask questions back.
Oh, that's over now.
Oh, I was trying to call for a point of privilege, but I suppose. So it's been moved. Can I call through a point of information?
You can through debate. Yes, you can.
Thanks.
We just can't introduce any new information. That's the only thing. As councillor Carr, you're first on the queue there. Do you have anything for question, or sorry, for debate?
Yeah, I'll just wait till the end. Thank you.
Okay, councillor De Genova? We're in debate now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask through you a point of information to staff.
Okay.
I understand that this was regarding affordability and after hearing concerns of the different, I think I heard, heard it said, home builders. I'd also like to know, did consultation not cover this off in the beginning before it was implemented? I'm just trying to understand how we didn't cover that off in consultation.
I'm not sure. I mean, we didn't, the only, the only comments we had were from staff.
I'm asking staff, Mr. Mayor, if possible. Thank you.
Didn't hear any, okay. Staff, do you, are you able to answer that question?
I, I, I'm not sure I could answer the question. Could, I hear it one more time.
Sorry, thanks very much. I was in, in hearing some of the opening statements. And the reason for this coming forward being that the process and the considerations were onerous. And I understood that there were a number of home builders who had come to the city with issues with this that impacted not only affordability, but also their ability to possibly develop. I would assume there would be a number of different issues with this. I'm just wondering how that was not included in the initial consultation that brought us to this place.
Perhaps, staff, you could just describe the consultation a bit, I think.
Sure. The, I'm not really sure about the issues of affordability as it relates to this proposed zoning change. The proposal here gives builders and the director of planning the ability to accommodate the equipment. But this, this proposed change doesn't require any equipment. It doesn't require any insulation. So I'm not sure how to address the affordability question.
I'm, because I understood there was, is that not correct in the report here?
Sorry, you kind of cut out there, councillor De Genova.
Is there, is there an exemption for floor space in the report? That's what I understand. Here.
There is a exemption for floor space to accommodate the equipment. But the reason for it is that council indicated in April that they had concerns that the equipment would consume space. In other words, the concern expressed by council in April in directing staff to undertake this work related to a loss of space.
No, I understood that. I had thought that I had also heard that there was concern from home builders about that as well. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I only have the information that the home builders and council were concerned about the loss of space.
It's good to know. And, and this policy that we're amending, when were the last amendments made to it? I could not see, I couldn't find that document.
I'm sorry, I don't know when the last time the zoning and development bylaw was updated. It's updated on a fairly regular basis in response to.
I know, that's why I wanted to know what the last time was. But thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. On to councillor Kirby Young. Up to, we're in debate here, so up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. I'm pleased to briefly speak in support of this report and the recommendations. I, as I've sort of said before, and I think it's probably good to highlight here, I support smart policy where this, that's within the city of Vancouver's direct and most influential sphere of impact. And I think that when you look at the emissions from buildings, they are the most significant. And I think that's where we can make a key difference as a city. And this one particularly for the small one to three story, I think makes it not punitive for those homeowners and others that want to actually put in kind of the zero emission mechanical equipment and move along that path in terms of, you know, reducing emissions, excuse me, and enhance sustainability. So I support this one. I know it's an administrative report, but I think it's important to note that it is about recognizing that if there's an impact that, you know, you just the practicality of requiring more space that the city is being flexible to try to enable people to make these changes and these investments towards our sustainability goals. And so green buildings makes a whole lot of sense to me. And I think that this is smart policy in an area where the city of Vancouver can, through regulation and low cost, actually enable and support people to do this. So I'm fully supportive of the recommendations for that reason. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Boyle?
I'm also very happy to support these recommendations, noting in particular that the majority of new built space in Vancouver continues to be low density residential. And that we know this is a large source of our local emissions. I appreciate the work that staff have done in reaching out to stakeholders and finding this route forward that allows more space so that we're not punishing the builders who are making these climate responsible decisions and that we're in fact moving toward requiring them not just as a carrot, but also as a stick because the timeline of climate change makes it clear that we need to be moving in that direction. So I think we've landed in a really good place here and I am very happy to see it move forward.
Thanks. Councillor Carr.
Yes, thanks so much. Yeah, I'm happy to hear the staff response back to councillors raising concerns around this floor space area and that it was really at council direction that these changes came forward. You know, it's so important for all us, all of us to recognize that the majority of emissions from, that GHG emissions in Vancouver come from buildings. And therefore, making sure that our buildings are as energy efficient and as low in GHG production as possible is absolutely a critical goal that we must achieve. So, you know, I haven't heard from contractors that they are concerned about this. I know that there have been councillors that are being concerned. Certainly there is an additional floor space required for the kind of mechanical apparatus that, that is needed. For example, for air to air exchange or air to water exchange. It does seem to make sense. So appreciate staff's effort on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for speakers on this issue. So I'm going to call a vote on this report.
Point of privilege.
Yes, go ahead. Vote in favor. Thank you, councillor De Genova.
Favor, please, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. We'll record that.
Mayor, it's councillor Dominado. Also take a vote assist in favor.
Okay, great. Thanks. I'll have the clerks mark that. And that has passed unanimously. Thanks, council. Okay, so we're moving on to item number two. Clerks, if you do need extra time, I just looking at the note here in the script about provide cleaning and stuff. If you need any of that, please let me know. Otherwise, we'll just proceed to number two, which is 1325 West 70th. And I'll just ask if any councillor has a, has a conflict of interest on this item. If not, I'm going to move on to the clerk reading the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by Matthew Chang Architect Incorporated to rezone 1325 West 70th Avenue from RM3A Multiple Dwelling District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six story residential building with 65 secured rental market units. A height of 17.6 meters and a floor space ratio of 2.4 are proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Three pieces of correspondence in support, seven pieces of correspondence in opposition, and three pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great, thank you so much. And council, we do have speakers of this item. So we will, Alicia Dejolay here from the, from the rezoning center. And if anybody wants to get on the list to speak to this, 1-833-353-8610, code 25035 hashtag to get on. And I believe the presentation is 21 slides, so we'll see the presentation and then move to hear from the applicant team if they have any comments.
Okay. My name is Alicia Dejolay. I'm resoning planner for this file at 1325 West 70th Avenue. Just to confirm, you can hear me and see the slides?
Absolutely.
Great. So this site is located on Marpole, on the north side of 70th Avenue, between Mon Calm and Hudson Street. It's located approximately halfway between the major arterials of Granville and Oak Street. The site is zoned RM3A with the blocks south of 70th Avenue.
Point of procedure, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the slides. I'm seeing the voting was, oh, thank you. The slides just came up. Thank you.
There is, there is a slight lag sometimes, but thanks for the catch. Okay, on to, please, continue.
Sure. The site is zoned RM3A with the blocks south of 70th Avenue, also zoned RM3A. Blocks to the north are zoned RT2. The number 100 Marpole Loop 22nd Street Station bus line runs along 70th Avenue with a bus stop directly across from the site. The site is currently occupied by a three story vacant rental apartment building. It is next door to the Marpole neighborhood house and just south of David Lloyd George Elementary School. The blocks along 70th Avenue and to the south primarily consist of two and three story strata and rental apartments. The blocks to the north primarily consists of single detached houses and duplexes. In August 2018, the building was damaged by fire. It was rendered uninhabitable due to the fire, smoke and water damage. A frustrated tenancy is when an unexpected event beyond anyone's control occurs, making it impossible to meet the original terms of the tenancy agreement and therefore the tenancies were ended. The city's tenant relocation and protection policy specifies no provisions in the case of a frustrated tenancy. The existing building had 36 rental units and has remained vacant since the fire. The site is located within the Marpole Community Plan area, which was approved by council in April 2014. The plan manages growth in the community over the next 30 years. Marpole contains a significant amount of affordable rental housing. The plan encourages a diversity of housing options, seeking a balance between preserving this existing affordable housing and the need to renew stock in limited areas. At this location under the plan, rezoning up to six stories and a density of 2.5 FSR can be considered. 100% secured rental is required. Incremental and smaller lot development is supported with excessive building widths discouraged. Upper stories should be set back to minimize appearance of scale and reduce shadow impacts. Applications are required to provide public realm improvements such as increased sidewalk width and additional street trees. This proposal is for a six story residential building with 65 secured market rental units and two levels of underground parking. The project will meet the minimum requirement of 35% family size units under the city's family room housing mix policy for rezoning projects. A height of 17.6 meters, 58 feet, with an FSR of 2.5 is proposed. An outdoor and indoor amenity space on the ground floor is proposed with an outdoor amenity space on the roof. The site has a number of mature trees proposed to be retained and relocated, shown as green boxes on this site plan. The building has insets to accommodate these front yard trees, which are all in good condition. And this helps to reduce the peelance of scale and building length. Our robe spruce trees at the lane are all in fair condition and are proposed to be removed. Retention would not be successful due to the proximity of. Retention would not be successful due to the proximity of the existing parquet. This proposal is seeking the DCL waiver and has proposed rents below the maximum specified in the DCL bylaw. The blue column shows the unit mix, the proposed average rent, and our average household income required. For comparison, the average market rents for newer buildings on the west side is shown in the green column, and the red column shows the cost of homeownership on the west side along with the average household income needed. If approved, all units would be secured through a housing agreement, which would prohibit stratification and separate sale of individual apartments for the life of the building or 60 years, whichever is greater. The plan seeks to monitor the pace of rental redevelopment in Marpole's RM3A area by tracking the number of applications, existing rental housing units affected, and the number of new market residential units proposed. As seen in the table, since the plan's approval in 2014, uptake has been modest, with three rezonings in the RM3A area approved. The project before you tonight would add 65 units of rental to the Marpole neighbourhood. A pre-application was, open house was held in September 2019 and was attended by 12 people. The application was received just under a year ago on December 20th, 2019, with the open house scheduled for April this year, however, it was cancelled due to the restrictions on gathering due to COVID-19. Consequently, a virtual open house was held from July 6th to 26th of this year. Details of the application was made available on Saviour City website with my contact information provided. During the three-week period, 276 unique visitors viewed the page, with 131 reviewing multiple documents, and 54 engaged individuals who submitted comment forms and questions. A total of 70 submissions were received for the entire engagement time period. This includes 15 questions, 54 comment forms, and one other piece of input via telephone. Feedback included support for the increase in rental housing stock, the appropriate scale of height, density, and massing, as well as the overall design. Concerns included comments of the building's height and shadowing, the negative impact on traffic congestion and street parking availability, safety for pedestrians in the lane, the affordability of the proposed units, and the overall building design. In response, a form of development condition has been added to reduce the scale and minimize shadow impacts on the residential properties to the north. The project will also be required to submit a traffic assessment and management study, which assesses the project's impact on existing transportation infrastructure and determines the mitigation measures needed. At the lane, speed bumps to slow traffic will be added, along with enhanced private patios and landscaping to better activate the space. Within the pelvic realm, a new eight-foot wide sidewalk and a minimum six-foot wide planted boulevard will be required, street lighting will be upgraded, and street trees will be added where space permits. As a part of Restart Smart Vancouver initiated in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute approximately 312 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. If approved, the application would deliver 65 secured market rental units and contribute to the housing targets outlined within the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Staff note that the report states that this application is exempt from CACs, however, this is an error as the site is currently zoned RM3A and the proposal replaces rental units that were damaged by fire. Real Estate Services reviewed the application and determined no CAC is expected. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the Marpole Community Plan. Staff recommend the application being approved, subject to conditions outlined in appendix via the report. Thank you, Mayor and council. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions we have.
Thanks, I'm just checking if the applicant team would like to speak to the application or just answer questions.
We will wait for questions.
Thanks so much, so over to council now, if you have any questions of staff or the applicant, and again, this is your only chance to ask questions to the applicant. Councillor Swanson, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I see that the proposed rents are less than what the DCL waiver requires. 1465 for a studio, 1779 for one bedroom. Is there any commitment that the proposed rents will actually be what's written here?
Hi councillor Swanson, yes, I will show you what the rents will be on this slide here. So just for comparison, this shows the proposed average unit rents for this project, that is a part of the conditions of appendix via the report, and the DCL maximums are in that column next to it. And so, yes, the application, the applicant will be held to those prices, and I can turn it over to Angel, our housing planner, to give you a little bit more information.
Yeah, you bet, thanks so much, Leisha. So I would only just add as well that the, so the proposed average unit rents are being secured through the DCL waiver, so those rents are secured for the first tenant or for one year, whatever is longer, as with the DCL waiver requirements, and then after that time, they can be increased. So I would just, and just note that the applicant proposed these rents because they are in line with the market rental rates in the neighbourhood, and so, and that is why those rents were proposed as part of the DCL waiver.
So you're eligible for a DCL waiver even if your rents are higher than the average market rents? Or, sorry, yeah, lower.
Councillor Swanson, was that a question?
Yeah, but not a very good one, let me ask another question to the applicant.
Okay.
Does the applicant have any plans to seek, or have you already got, any kind of government, provincial, or federal financing for this project?
No, we don't.
So you're going to get your financing from a bank or from your-
From private financial institution.
From what?
From private banking, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks councillor Swanson, that looks like it's it for questions, and so we'll move on now to hear from the public, we do have, I'm hearing from a clerk, we do have two speakers that are signed up, and I believe you have speaker number two on the line. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on. Sorry, I'm just going to look at the name here. Right, we have Ralph Pickyado, Ralph Pickyado?
Could I start asking or speaking?
Hi there, yes, please go ahead, thanks for joining us tonight, you have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, okay, I heard that you are mentioning the rental fees that would be required once it is approved. How much would be the rent that will perform?
Well, sir, the way this, the way this public hearing works is that you're allowed to provide statements on how you feel about this project, whether you're opposed or in favor, and we can ask you questions, but we, we're not, we don't respond to questions, that's the legal outline of this hearing, so.
Okay.
So maybe you can start by how you feel, can you tell us about, for example, how you feel about the building?
Yeah, okay, first, Marpole has been traditionally known as an area that has a lower rental fee, but in the last few years, rental fees have been going up and up. And we are a senior citizen couple, and we are paying $1,040 per month. So for us, it's not quite an easy payment to pay, but we managed somehow to do it now. If a new building, such a building would be approved, it could probably, or I would say, all chances that will increase the rental average that is being collected in that area. So from that point of view, I'm against the project.
Okay, thanks so much, I'm going to check, I don't see any questions from councillors for you, sir. Do want to thank you for calling in this evening and sharing your view. Now I'm going to move to, just check with the, we had also Jason Mayer on the list, clerks, is Jason Mayer there?
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and I understand Jason Mayer has not joined at this point.
Okay, great, thank you, and so, council, then I'm going to lose my first call then for speakers, 1-833-353-8610, 25035 hashtag to get on the list, and the number's on Twitter and on the live stream, clerks, is there anyone else on the line to speak to this item?
There is no one on the line at this point, Mayor Stewart.
Great, I'll do a second call, the number followed by participant code 25035 pound sign to get on the list, that number's on Twitter on the live stream, and clerks, anybody join?
Still no one, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, so I'll go into the third call, 1-833-353-8610, participant code 25035 hashtag to get on the list. Council, we're going to, it is 7pm on the dot, so we'll come back at 7:05, just to give people a chance to participate, okay, thanks, we'll see you at 7:05.
If anyone currently in the room would like to speak to item two, you may press the star-
Five clerks, anybody else on the line?
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and no, we have nobody for this item.
Great, okay, so we're going to close the speakers' list, council, and as we haven't had any public comments after 5pm today, we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing, closing comments, ask any questions to staff that you like, applicant, have any closing comments?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thanks, staff have any closing comments?
No, Mr Mayor.
Great, councillor, we have questions for staff?
Yeah, there are two quick questions, the first one is on the amenities in the region. It showcases that we've hit 38% of the projected population increase, but we're really low on the priorities, and I'm wondering how proving this project can try to meet those goals of meeting the amenities in the area.
Hi councillor, thanks for your question, are you speaking to the Marpole neighbourhood house and the Marpole Community Centre?
No, when you look at the list of the community amenities, talking about Willie Mackey Park, all the rest of them, we're really low, yet we've delivered a lot of density in the area. So I'm wondering how the public and how this project's going to lead to helping us move the dial to delivering some of those projects.
So as this project does not collect a CAC, in fact, funding for these facilities will be collected through other means, so for example, on November 25th, council actually approved financing for design development of the Marpole Community Centre. And so that is a kind of a work programme that just started up in January and will be ongoing until for the next five years or so.
Okay, no, I'm looking at the discrepancy, like when we're looking at continuing to approve projects in neighbourhood, and we have a list of amenities that we're trying to deliver, and we start to get up to close to 50% of the capacity in that area, yet haven't delivered on the amenities, it starts to concern me, so I want us to really reflect on ensuring that we can deliver public amenities to the neighbourhoods. My second question is on the tree canopy, recognizing that park board just increased their tree canopy from 25% to 30%, and in this project, we weren't able to deliver even a one-to-one replacement. Can you tell me why we weren't able to work with the proponent to deliver at least a one-to-one replacement?
Great, thanks for your question, currently, we're just meeting the current bylaw as it's written, so there will be 18 new onsite trees, we do, we are dealing with a lot of those, if you look in the street view on the lane, there's a lot of really mashed-together cedar hedges that are, will be replaced, and so that's counting as a lot of the quantity on site, so about half of the 28 trees on site are, is a cedar hedge, and they'll be replaced with more fuller, healthier trees in the back there.
Okay, so we can ensure that the canopy will be larger, the number might not, might be different, is that correct? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, I don't see any other questions, so can we have someone move the motion? Recommendation?
So move, councillor Carr.
Thank you councillor Carr. Thank you councillor Boyle, I'm going to move over to the main queue here, sorry, sorry councillor Hardwick, if you want to put yourself on the main queue, great, thanks, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Oh, I can be quite brief on this, every time I see one of these presentations and it talks about the fact that it's measuring itself against the Housing Vancouver Strategy targets, it puts me in the same position until those targets are established and the long-awaited data is provided, it makes it very difficult to be voting in favor of projects without full information. So I just again want to point out that my reason for not supporting these projects is because I'm not operating with the full amount of information that I've requested, thank you.
Councillor Carr.
Yes, thank you, just wanted to take time to actually commend the applicant for actually bringing down the rentals from the maximum, and recognizing that this is a time when, even though there is a lot of competition for rental housing, and we, certainly right now there is, we're not sure at the time that the project will be completed, but that this is what the market is bearing, and in tune with the market, the rents are established. So, you know, I do appreciate that, rather than going just- So, you know, I do appreciate that rather than going just to the maximum and, and as I say, thank the applicant for that.
Thank you, Councilor Swanson.
Yeah, so I'm looking at this, developers getting almost double the FSR. The city is waiving almost a million dollars in DCLs, and the average or the median rent for that area is 1158. So if these rents start, where it's said that they'll start at 1465 for a studio, 1779 for one bedroom, I think it's gonna have a gentrifying impact on other rentals in the area. So I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby.
Yeah, I'll also be brief, it's rental, we need rental, I support rental. It is always a challenge sometimes when replacing older buildings, but I think that the fact, and it bears emphasizing as was stated earlier, that the applicant is endeavoring to keep those rents more affordable is really critical. Because when you look at the median household income for Marple, other than areas like Strathcona or the downtown east side, it is one of the lowest in the city. And so that affordable rental stock while aging and sometimes has to be renewed, it's really important to provide affordability options particularly in this neighborhood. And so I think that that is a positive in terms of this application. It's well situated in terms of transit and near amenities like Marple Neighborhood House, Marple Neighborhood House, sorry, which is a, you know, sort of well-loved and utilized amenity in the neighborhood. And so I appreciate the fact that we're still able to deliver rental, which is becoming more and more difficult to do in the city, and that we're trying to keep the rents affordable, which is nice to see. An anomaly, I would say, from some of the applications we've had at council where you actually see those rents being lower than they allow DCL maximum. So I think those are really the positives for me on this project, and I will support it for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps if I can get Councilor Bly to just take the chair while you make a few comments, if that's okay with you, Councilor Bly?
Yes, fine.
Thanks so much. I just wanted to say, council, that just to draw to your attention, of course, that this, the building that occupied the site previously had burned down in, I think, 2018. So it's very admirable that here we are in 2020 with a, you know, an application in front of us. It took a very quick time to get through the the planning process and to land here in front of us as a rezoning. I look at this project and I'm really happy with what I'm seeing here. A secured market rental is is important, the rents are lower than 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 we'd see across the rest of the city. So very pleased the proponent has come forward and thank you again to staff for doing such a good job to get this forward quickly. So thanks very much. Those are my comments, and I could take the chair back, Councilor Bly, if that's okay with you?
Yes, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. So council, that's it for comments on this one, we can bring it to a vote.
Mayor, it's Councilor Domnado, I'll take a vote in favor, please.
Thank you. The clerks register that. And I'm just checking, Councilor DeGenova. See, Councilor DeGenova on the webex. Clerks, perhaps you could contact Councilor DeGenova, somebody could text her to see if she's able to phone in.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I have texted Councilor DeGenova, so I'll see if I hear back from her.
Okay, and council, the way the voting works is somebody's not able to vote, we have to pause. So we're gonna have to take a recess until we can find Councilor DeGenova.
Councilor DeGenova has indicated she's calling in.
Oh, okay, Councilor DeGenova, we're just voting now.
Thank you, I know, Mr. Mayor, I lost connection, I don't know why the line was dead.
Would you like a vote assist on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to look at the recommendations because I was trying to get back into the meeting. So I'm just, I, I want to make sure that we are, we are indeed voting on the last item on West 70th, is that correct?
We're on, yes, the Marple rental, yep.
That's what I thought, so yeah, in favor.
Okay, great, thanks. So of course, can mark that as in favor, we have Councilor Hardwick in opposition. And thanks so much, council, that has passed. Okay, we're on to item numbers, number three has been withdrawn, I think. Yes, so we're moving to item four, which is the 2488 Garden Drive. Okay, Councilor Hardwick, I have you on the queue, did you wanna?
That must be a holdover.
Okay, thanks, no problem. Great, so anyway, I'm just gonna, if anyone has a conflict, please let us know. Otherwise, we'll read the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by Garden Drive Limited Partnership to rezone 2406 to 2488 Garden Drive from RS1 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use development in two connected buildings containing 109 strata housing units and commercial space at grade, a height of 22 meters and a floor space ratio of 2.83 are proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Forty-six pieces of correspondence in support. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great, thank you so much. Just gonna can read out the number, 1-833-353-8610, followed by code 25035 hashtag to get on the list. We have Kent McDougall from the rezoning center here with staff, and I'm just checking the speakers list to see if we have any registered speakers, council. Let me check here. Rats, I think I accidentally deleted that email. One second here, here we go. Okay, item number four, yes, we do have speakers, so let's, let's go through the slides. And if I can turn it over to the staff, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to check in that everyone can indeed see the presentation slot.
We can see it on the webex, I'm just gonna check on the, yes, we can see it on the public view too, so please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Kent McDougall, and I am the rezoning planner for this rezoning application at 2406 to 2488 Garden Drive. Prior to getting started on the presentation, I'd like to note the yellow memo included with this item, which addresses a necessary consequential amendment to the subdivision bylaw should council approve this rezoning. The amendment would adjust the subdivision sectional maps within the bylaw and reflect the change of the parcels from RS1 zone sites to CD1 at enactment. The amendment is noted within the attached memo as recommendation F. However, the recommendation has been included more accurately in the summary and recommendations as recommendation E. This application for two connected six-story strata residential buildings with a small portion of upgrade retail is being considered under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. The application was submitted in August of 2019, which represents an approximate 16-month review process to public hearing. Staff note that the typical review timeline is approximately 12 months. In this case, there were some discussion between staff and the applicant exploring potential adjustments to the proposal as a result of the review process, which was protracted by the impacts in March of the COVID-19 pandemic. The subject site is an eight-lot assembly currently zoned RS1 residential. Properties to the west along Broadway are currently zoned RS1. However, the plan allows for rezoning consideration of up to six stories. Along East 8th Avenue is zoned RM8A, allowing for three-story townhomes. Immediately south and southwest of the site, across Broadway, is zoned RS1 with the potential to be rezoned up to six stories. Immediately east of the site, across the adjacent north-south lane, is zoned C1 Commercial, allowing for three-story mixed-use development with planned direction for consideration of up to a six-story mixed-use development. Immediately north, across East 8th Avenue, is zoned RM11, allowing for four-story residential development. To the northwest is zoned RT5 for three-story duplexes. The subject site, here shown highlighted in red, is situated on the east side of Garden Drive between Broadway and East 8th Avenue. It consists of eight lots, which are currently developed with detached houses, one of which contains a basement suite. At the time of rezoning, application in August of 2019, two of the units were vacant, three of the properties were leased back to the previous homeowners, and the remaining four units were tenanted. Regarding the tenanted units, the tenancy agreements began after the property transfer and are of less than two years as of the date of application, and there are no eligible tenants as defined under the tenant relocation and protection policy. None of the eight houses were constructed prior to the 1940s, nor were they identified in the plan as potential heritage sites or part of a character streetscape cluster. The site is located in the catchment of the Lower Secord Elementary School, located less than a block west of the site, and within the catchment of Vancouver Technical Secondary, located approximately 500 meters east. According to Vancouver School Board's draft long-range facilities plan, Lower Secord Elementary is currently operating at its 639 seat capacity with a reported shortage of 17 spaces in 2017. By 2027, the draft plan forecasts a surplus of approximately six spaces, as well as nearby nearby elementary schools such as Grandview and Queen Alexandra have surplus spaces, and the overall enrollment trend for the wider area is changing. Greater capacity is found at the secondary level, where the capacity utilization was approximately 97% of Vancouver Technical's 1700-seat capacity, 2017. There's a draft forecasted surplus of 51 spaces for 2027, and surplus capacity exists and is forecasted for nearby secondary schools such as Britannia, Templeton, Gladstone, and Windermere. The site is well-served by transit with frequent bus service available on Broadway and along Nanaimo Street, and the site is approximately 800 meters or a 10-minute walk from the Commercial Broadway Skytrain Station. Four bikeways are also in close proximity, including the Lakewood Bikeway along Lakewood Drive, the Central Valley Bikeway along Grandview Highway North, the 10th Avenue Bikeway, and the Sunrise Bikeway along Slokan Street. Future land use on the subject site is guided by the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, with the site being located across two distinct transition areas of the plan. The site is highlighted here in red. The north half of the site is located within the Grandview Transition Areas, which allows for consideration of up to six stories and a density of 2.65 FSR. The south half, along Garden Drive, adjacent East Broadway, is located in the transition area for the Commercial Broadway Station precinct. The plan here provides direction for up to six stories with a density of up to three FSR. Commercial uses are required on the first floor, fronting Broadway, with a front yard setback sufficient enough to achieve a minimum 5.5-meter or 18-foot sidewalk also along Broadway. In accordance with the plan, this application proposes two connected six-story buildings with upgrade commercial space fronting Broadway. The proposed building height is 22 meters, with an accompanying blended density of 2.83 FSR across the entire eight-lot site, which is a blending of the planned direction for three FSR on the south four lots and 2.65 FSR on the north four lots. The proposal currently includes 109 strata residential units and meets the city's family unit housing mix requirement for a minimum of 25% two-bedroom units and 10% three-bedroom units. One and a half levels of underground parking is to be accessed from the lane east of the site, and parking is being provided as per the parking bylaw. Building is connected on level one with a shared indoor and outdoor amenity shown here. At the ground level, commercial retail units front Broadway, with the two-corner units wrapping around the corners to Garden Drive and the lane to the east. The proposal reinforces the retail vitality of the Broadway and Nanaimo shopping node, the small, local-serving retail units and transparent facades to encourage public realm activation and retail visibility. Staff also note that View Cone 27 passes over the site. View Cone 27 protects the views of the North Shore Mountains from John Henry Park or Trout Lake. The proposal complies with the View Cone maximum height. In terms of public consultation, the applicant hosted a developer-led pre-application open house on June 12th of 2019 with 29 attendees. A city-led open house was hosted by staff on November 4th of 2019 with 54 attendees. Overall, staff received a total of 60 pieces of feedback through the consultation process. Comments received in support of the proposal generally cited the appropriateness of the neighborhood context, the inclusion of retail, the building height, massing and density, including the neighborhood transitions, and the proposed building design. Concerns raised through the process generally related to building height, massing and density overwhelming the surrounding single-family houses, the building design, including the overhangs on the fourth and sixth floors, traffic and safety, and parking. In response to the feedback received regarding height, staff note that the site is identified in the plan as a suitable location for residential and mixed-use development in mid-rise apartment forms up to six stories to support greater housing options in the neighborhood. Six stories also represents an incremental increase in height relative to the six-story height achievable along Broadway to the west and east and four stories achievable on the neighboring site to the north. Staff acknowledged the particular concern regarding the six-story height relative to the three stories achievable to the northwest and have prepared conditions to further respond to this. Regarding concerns around increased traffic, for a six-story development at an arterial road location, potential increase in traffic is considered limited, and staff do not anticipate any traffic congestion in local streets. Further, the proposal will contribute to improvements in the immediate area, including speed humps in the north-south lane to the east and cash contributions towards improvements to both Broadway and Nanaimo intersection and Nanaimo and East 8th Avenue intersection. In terms of parking, with 118 proposed parking spaces, the proposal currently has more parking than required for a strata residential and mixed-use project of this size. In terms of the overall form of development, the urban design panel reviewed the application on November 27th of 2019 and supported it with recommendations. Panel members noted that the project would benefit from refinement to massing to enhance transitioning and improve sustainable construction, from an enlarged separation between the buildings, improvements to the roof overhang on level four to deal with the bulky appearance from the roof from levels five and six, and from improved solar access to the indoor and outdoor common amenities. Based on staff review, public feedback, and urban design panel advice, staff have prepared conditions related to the form of development to refine the massing to enhance transitioning to the neighborhood context, to improve the sustainable construction, including reduced shoulder setbacks where possible, to enlarge the separation between the buildings and improve solar access for the indoor and outdoor common amenity spaces. The proponent team has since explored refinements of the design to incorporate this advice, including relocating some massing to the south building, increasing the upper story setbacks, increasing building separation, addressing overhangs, and improving the amenity space by raising it to the fifth floor, increasing the solar access. In terms of public benefits, the proposal will contribute over $6 million in public benefits, including $3.5 million in community amenity contributions and over $2.6 million in development cost levies. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute approximately 382 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. In conclusion, the proposal is generally consistent with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, and staff support this application subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Staff are available to answer questions, thank you.
Thanks so much, is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
We are here to speak to the application, we don't have anything further to present, and I'd like to thank Mr. McDougall for his comprehensive presentation.
Okay, great, thanks so much, council. So this is your chance to ask questions to the applicant or of course to staff if you'd like. So I'll just have the queue open now, if you want to put yourself on the queue. I don't see anybody on the queue, council, so now we're gonna move to hear from the public. If anybody wants to speak to this, 1-833-353-8610, code 25035 hashtag to get on the list. And we have one speaker, council, who I'm just gonna pull up the list here. I'm just gonna go through the list. Do we have Federico Fuoco on the line, clerks? Federico, I'm sorry, Federico Fuoco.
Federico Fuoco.
I'm sorry about that. Federico Fuoco available? Federico Fuoco available?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes, I'm on the line.
Great, thanks so much. You have up to five minutes. Yes, I can. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, counsel. Yeah, I'm against this because you're replacing eight homes with 109 units. And this is not on the principal street. This is on a side street. So the density and the transformation of a single-family neighborhood where you have community, I think is the wrong way to go. This is not, the bulk of this unit is not on Broadway. The bulk of the unit is on Garden Drive. And this is just the beginning of the end, I feel, of single-family neighborhoods where you have community. So I implore counsel not, not to approve this application. Okay, the, the, we're blessed in the city to have areas of density and areas of single-family neighborhoods where communities live and grow and, and kids play. You cannot do this. You cannot allow to have these huge developments on side streets and wreck the single-family neighborhoods. You cannot do this. And I just want to ask Mr. McDougall, you said there were hearings back, I don't know, from June or that? I only received this card two weeks ago to speak, to speak on this this evening. So I don't know where this was presented or aired, or, because I knew nothing about this until I received the card in the mail about two, three weeks ago. It's the first I heard of this.
Okay, do you have anything else to add?
Well, not unless you have a question for me, but like I said, you guys cannot, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, actually, do you have a question? Counselor Hardwick has a question for you. Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuoco. Do you live in the neighborhood? I guess that's the most pertinent question. What's your relationship to this location?
Yes, I live in East Eighth since 1987.
So
And I've seen, sorry again.
No, so a block away? I'm sorry, I, how close are you located?
Two blocks.
Right, so it would have been within the catchment. And you didn't see a sign on the property or any other indication that there was a, an application coming ahead?
Not if you drive right by Garden, which I haven't in a long time. If I go, I go through Eighth or Seventh to get to Commercial Drive.
And you've lived there since 1987?
Correct. And I've seen a major change here. I've seen changes in, in some of, even some of the homes here that are allowed to have, like, multiple people in, in the homes, like, you don't even know your neighbors anymore. You know, before going up here, you knew a lot of the neighbors, everybody knew each other, kids would be playing. I mean, you don't see that anymore. And you see the change, and something like this would destroy that, that community. And this is just the beginning. I mean, if you get, you know, if the council allows this one on a side street, then how many more are going to pop up? You know, and, and that's why, you know, density where density is, is fine. It used to be really downtown. Now it's, now it's expanding everywhere. And like I say, you know, it's wrecking single-family neighborhoods. It's a big mistake.
I don't know that we have many people coming to speak tonight. Why do you think that is?
I, could be COVID, could be people just trying to cope, you know, first and foremost. But given some time, I mean, I can guarantee you, I can get a petition of hundreds of signatures against this, guaranteed, 100%. Right now, I'm just trying to survive in my business. I don't have the time. I'm just trying to stay afloat due to COVID and due to the, due to the circumstances.
Well, I was just curious, because we do get, you know, a lot of feedback around certain applications, but we hadn't around this one, so I was curious why that would be.
Like I said, this is the first card that I received about this, this proposal. And it came in the mail two weeks ago.
Thank you very much for addressing us today. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for questions?
For the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. And that's it for questions, sir, for you. We're going to move on to the, I'm just going to go down the list and call names of speakers. So the next speaker is Matthew Riscalla.
Yes, hi there.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Please go ahead.
Thanks. So yeah, I'm Matt Riscalla. I also live in Vancouver, and I'm in support of this project because I think it's going to bring the very necessary housing that we need, and it also brings retail to the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm just checking here, and I don't see any, oh, Counselor Hardwick, you have a question for Mr. Riscalla?
Hey, well, thank you very much, Mr. Riscalla. Are you also a resident of this area?
I'm not, but it's definitely an area that I'm interested in moving to.
So then what prompted you to comment on this application? What's your personal connection?
Well, like I'm saying, I think it would just increase the, the amount of housing there, and it's a good neighborhood. It's a good family neighborhood, so it's a nice area, area to live, I think.
And you just called out of the blue? I guess you don't have to answer me. I'm just curious what would prompt someone to call out of the blue and say that they were positive about an application, that's all.
Yeah, well, like, like I said, I mean, I'm, I'm looking to move, and I've been checking out that area, and it's, I just think it's something that would be, that would be good in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for questions, sir. So we're going to move on to the next speaker. We have Wendy Melendez, Melendez on the, next on the list.
Hi.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, I just wanted to say I also live and work in Vancouver, and I support this development. I really do think it's much-needed housing in Vancouver, especially in the Grandview Woodland area.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks very much. There's no questions for you. Thank you for participating tonight, and I'm going to move to the final speaker we have on the list, April Funk. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Hardwick, you're, I was just late seeing you there. Hope to speak, caller's still on the line, Counselor Hardwick. Sorry, you have a question, speaker?
Are you still there? I don't know if she's still there.
I don't think so. I'm sorry, Counselor Hardwick, I saw you late on the queue.
Okay, no worries.
Okay, thanks. So I am going to move to the last speaker, April Funk.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here, and April Funk has withdrawn.
Okay, thank you so much, clerks. So I'm going to call for the first time then for speakers. The number to call is, I'm sure you can all recite this with me now, 1-833-353-8610, participant code 25035, hashtag to get on the list. And I'm going to check with the clerks to see if there's anybody else on the line.
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and no one else on the line.
Great. I will make my second call then. 1-833-353-8610, that's on the Twitter on a live stream, participant code 25035, hashtag, and going to check with the clerks again. Anybody else calling?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, and we have no one for this item.
Okay, great. And the third call, the numbers are on the live stream and have been tweeted out. And counsel, it is 7:40, so I'm going to come back at 7:45 to, to, for the third and final call and debate and decision. Okay, counsel, so we'll see you back here in about five minutes. Forty-five clerks, is there anybody on the line?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, and no one on the line for this item.
Great, thanks so much. So we're going to close the speakers list, and we're going to close the receipt of public comments, and I'm going to ask the applicant, does the applicant have any closing comments?
We don't have any closing comments, Your Honor.
Thanks so much. Staff, any closing comments?
Yeah, it's just one, a quick one. I'd like to extend a thank you to the applicant in, in taking some patience and, and exploring potential changes through the urban design panel review and, and what we heard from the community, and taking that into account through this review process.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for staff from counsel? I don't see anybody on the queue. Oh, Counselor Frye, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. For our landscaping team, I'm just looking through the, the tree list and stuff, and I don't see a lot of native trees. Am I missing that? I see there's a limber pine, and, and that's about it for sort of native plantings. Are there any further considerations around, in particular with regard to, we're going to be having a report back on our bird strategy tomorrow, and this is a pretty significant site. I'm wondering if there's any further contemplation around more of a focus on native plants?
Yes, we can definitely explore the selection of, of native trees or more appropriate trees in landscaping through the, the development process.
Am I correct in my analysis that it's mostly sort of more decorative variety trees?
I'm, I'm not totally, not aware of, not aware of that these decisions have been made yet.
Okay, I'm just looking at the landscaping board. Okay, and, and we, we do expect further revisions at, at DP, in particular around some of the massing and the interface on, on Eighth and Garden, and, and then the, the retail frontage on Broadway?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I certainly would like to see, I think, a bit more on the, on the native tree capacity, I think, given the location, especially adjacent to the cut.
Would you like to move the report, Counselor Frye? I have no one else on the list.
Sure, I'll, that's fine, Mayor. I'm happy to move the report.
Great, thanks. We have a second.
Boyle.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. So is there any debate and decision on this at all? I see, okay, Counselor Hardwick, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Again, I'm concerned about the public process around these applications. It sounds, and I'm also concerned when I hear very different perspectives from people that live in the area who identify themselves as living in the area and other people that don't, and when I look them up on LinkedIn or I try and, try and contextualize people and where they're coming from and discover they're from the development industry, it's, it's kind of makes it hard to take that input seriously, just saying. Overall, again, I remain unconvinced of the decisions that we're making around our housing choices until we get a proper analysis done. I'm going to be hesitant to be supporting things out of principle. So, again, I, this is just a, more back to staff than to, to any, anyone else, is that, you know, we really need to be thinking carefully about what we're doing and what we're, we're engaging moving forward. I continue to see these things coming through at rapid pace, and I would really like to see more consideration and certainly more involvement within the community. And maybe we'll see some of that with the upcoming Vancouver plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Swanson. If you're muted, Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, so far tonight, this is 174 units. Yeah, so far tonight, this is 174 units we're dealing with, zero of which will be affordable to the median renter household. I just keep thinking that my role here is to keep pushing for affordability. Here's a situation where the developer is getting four times the density. We're giving them that, and we're not getting anything in terms of affordability. So it's going to be pretty hard to vote for this for me. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Boyle.
Thanks. I will be voting in support of this project. I live relatively close. This is a neighborhood that many of the kids, that my kids go to school with, live in. I know that it's a tough neighborhood to find secure rental housing in and that many of the renters in the neighborhood live in secondary rental or basement suites, which is tough when you want to be able to stay in a neighborhood for a long enough period to keep your kids in the same school and you're, and you're renting somebody else's space where you don't know how long you'll be able to stay. So I am glad to see more secure rental in the neighborhood. And I would just add that this particular site is on my pandemic running route. So I have been running by it for quite a while now and seen the sign and know the site and backing onto a pretty significant transit route. And so I, as council knows, would like to see secure market rental off of arterials, but also think that this is an appropriate place to be able to welcome more renters into the neighborhood into secure housing over the long term. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Bly.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I am supportive of this project. I thought it was important, maybe as the other councillor, along with Counselor Boyle, who's lived in the area for three years, to chime in. I think that, I think the ground level retail is a really exciting addition for the area. Currently, there's a, some sort of convenience store, maybe a subway, and some laundromat. There's not really anything in that area, and you'll need to get over to Commercial Drive to access any retail. And I think with the, the sort of future growth of the, of this area and the upgrades to Nanaimo and what's coming in, in the retail component is actually pretty exciting. And we know that secured rental, as Counselor Boyle pointed out, is a really important piece. And also respecting the fact that the transition, the bulk of the building will be on Garden Drive and not East Broadway, is disruptive, of course, to the adjacent neighbors directly. But I'd say that the actual corner of East Broadway in Nanaimo is fairly underdeveloped at this stage and is likely to sort of replicate what we're seeing in this particular development. It's just happening in the reverse, which is a similar argument that we heard when the other side of East Broadway was decided on early days in our term on Garden Drive. So I'm supportive for the same reasons I was supportive of that building. I think it's the kind of density we need in this area. And street serving retail is a really, really good addition. So I'll be supportive.
Thanks, Counselor Frye.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm just wondering if I could point information through you from staff. This is a strata building, though. There's no secure rental in this, correct?
I can ask the staff to reply.
Kevin Tugle from rezoning, yes, it is a strata building, 109 strata residential units.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was, I was getting a little bit confused there, but I appreciate some of the, that being said, we do need strata market development. And I do notice it's, it's a pretty generous CAC DCL package. And we're not always used to seeing that because we're so used to doing a lot of the secured market rental. But I do think that this is an appropriate scale for the location. I'm quite familiar with that location. It's the back alley from where Cindy's Palace used to be, the Dim Sum joint, and, and currently, of course, Bonds Off Broadway is, is across the alley from this location. So it's an area that, that sees the potential for a lot of this kind of work, obviously with some of the transit oriented development that we can expect at the Broadway subway station. So I'm, I'm quite supportive of the scale and scope. I appreciate the comments inside of the, the UDP notations and where we can expect to see some change at DP. So I will be supporting this, this development. And yeah, thanks for the clarification around the intent.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad that Counselor Frye asked my pointed information because I was, I went back and read the application. I was confused because I heard two councillors wax on enthusiastically about new secured market rental, but I'm glad for the clarification of my understanding that this is a full strata building. Having said that, I do support it as much as we need rental, and this is not that, because we do need a continuum of housing options, and it provides an alternative that is more affordable relative to purchasing a single family home or even a duplex or another alternative, which is out of reach for a lot of people in Vancouver now. And so I think that that's what we need to keep in mind, that it is beneficial for council to bring forward a number of different types of housing to suit the needs of different people along the housing spectrum, whether that's in different stages of life or different levels of affordability. And so glad to see that. Also glad to see the at-grade commercial space and hopeful, as always, that that can be configured to provide locally serving retail spaces. We talk a lot about the importance of food security and corner stores. And even if you do have larger sort of grocery style options, if they are multiple blocks and further away, it can provide an impediment in terms of being able to walk and have a complete community for your daily needs. And, and I think that that's local serving retail, if it can, those series can be demised or the tenanting strategy can be targeted to that. Small business can really help to create a sense of community. So for those reasons, I will support this application. And I would also note as well that while we did have a couple of speakers that expressed concerns, and I'm always sensitive to that, in reviewing the correspondence for this on the council agenda, it's quite noteworthy that all of the written correspondence that we received was all in favor of this project. And I see what was documented here was 46 emails or indications of support and none opposed. And I think that's also an important consideration. So for those reasons, I will support it. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Bly, you've got about two and a half minutes left, three and a half minutes.
Thanks. And I just wanted to clearly state for the record that I appreciate Counselor Frye's call out there. I think I was so enthusiastically excited about the street serving retail that the unit mix was what caught me on slide eight, along with the fact that it says that it's backing onto East 10th, which I was clarifying the staff is in fact East Eight. So apologies for mixing those two things up, but I recognize that this is absolutely strata. And that is why we get to have retail in the building itself and why it makes sense financially. And of course, still support it. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Counselor Boyle.
I will just clarify the same thing. Thanks, Counselor Frye. It is maybe a sign of the hours we're all working right now, but for the record, also recognize that this is a strata building and, and I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. That's it for comments on this one. So I am going to call a vote. Counselor Kirby, Counselor Dejanova.
Point of privilege.
Yes, go ahead.
If I could vote in favor, please.
Great, no problem. Thank you. Clerks can mark Counselor Dejanova in favor. Thank you very much. That passes with Counselor Swanson and Hardwick in opposition. Okay, council, we're going on to our last item on the agenda this evening, which is the CD1 rezoning of Oak Ridge Transit Center. Just wondering if anyone, any council member wishes to declare a conflict of interest. If you do, please let us know. At this point, I'm going to get the clerk to raise the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by James K. Chang Architects to rezone 949 West 41st Avenue and 5469 to 5507 Willow Street from RS1 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit a mixed-use development consisting of 17 buildings between 1 and 26 stories in height with approximately 330 social housing units, 180 secured rental housing units, including 45 moderate income rental units, and 1,120 strata housing units. The proposal also includes 2,229.7 square meters of commercial space, a 69-space childcare center, and a two-acre public park. A maximum building height of 83.8 meters and a floor space ratio of 2.36 are proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Twelve pieces of correspondence in support and two pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks so much for that. So let's see, we're going to read out the number here. So 1-833-353-8610, toll-free, participant code 25035, hashtag get on the list. We have Zach Bennett here from Major Projects. We do have speakers, so we will proceed with the presentation. And I'll turn it over to Zach Bennett.
Great. Mayor Kennedy and council, this is Susan Hade, Deputy Director of Long Range Planning. I'm just going to provide a very brief intro to the Oak Ridge Transit Center rezoning application and then pass it over to Zach. The rezoning application before you tonight for the Oak Ridge Transit Center, or OTC, represents a very significant milestone in the redevelopment of this major site in Vancouver. And it builds on work that's been underway since 2014. Major project sites like the OTC present opportunities for the city, the community, and developers to collaborate and achieve outcomes beneficial to Vancouver and its residents. And these major project sites are distinguished from more typical development sites in a few key ways. First is the large size of these sites, which includes this 14-acre site, as well as larger ones like the 80-acre Olympic Village site, the 20-acre Pearson Dogwood site, or the 90-acre site for the Jericho Lands, where we're currently undertaking policy work with the community. Secondly, the limited ownership of large sites leads to opportunities for coordinated system and citywide approaches to achieve and demonstrate leadership across a variety of city goals. And this really allows for focused delivery of major public benefits that may otherwise take years or never be achieved. Typically, this is accomplished through the creation of site-specific policy statements for major project sites that build expectations not only about the future development, but also about what the community can expect to improve quality of life in Vancouver neighborhoods. The OTC policy statement development, as I mentioned earlier, began in 2014 with a process led by the city planning staff. And through this process, the community had multiple opportunities and really engaged and shaped the final plan. As a result of this 18-month process, the OTC policy statement was approved unanimously in December 2015. And since this time, city staff have worked with the landowners and the community to shape a rezoning proposal that meets the policy statement, along with supporting subsequent changes and directions of this council, including policies, guidelines, and council priorities. And you'll hear specifically about this council's priorities to enable the addition of more secured rental, below-market rental, more social housing, and really advancing the climate emergency action plan and the big moves of the climate emergency. So the rezoning application before you tonight represents that investment of time and energy from the community, the developer, city staff, to engage and develop and contribute to a site and a future community that will be located within a high amenity central area of Vancouver. If approved, it will mark a key milestone, building upon the years of work on the OTC site while securing public benefits through private development. So our core team, led by Neil Rochoe, Assistant Director of Community Planning, Kirsten Robinson, Senior Planner, and Zach Bennett, Lead Planner, will present the application. And an interdepartmental staff team from all departments are here to answer your questions tonight. So with that, it's over to Zach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Are you able to hear me and see the presentation?
I can hear you, and I'm just looking on the orange cone. Yep, we're good to go. So please go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Zach Bennett, and I am the planner for this application to rezone the Oak Ridge Transit Center, or the OTC, at 949 West 41st Avenue and 5469 to 5507 Willow Street from RS1 to CD1 to allow for the phase redevelopment of the site under the city's Oak Ridge Transit Center and adjacent sites policy statement. Staff recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined within appendix B of the report. The subject site shown here in red is 14.3 acres and located along 41st Avenue just east of Oak Street. It was formerly TransLink's Oak Ridge Transit Center bus depot, but today most of those buildings have been removed and the site is primarily empty, paved surface. Fronting along Willow Street on the eastern edge of the site are lots with three single-family houses. The surrounding area is currently a mix of single-family houses, townhouses, older apartment buildings, and newer mid-rise residential buildings. The adjacent zoning is mixed, but is predominantly composed of RS, single-family, and various CD1 zones. The OTC is centrally located close to a number of significant green spaces, including Venduzan Garden and Oak Meadows and Queen Elizabeth Parks. Nearby are several large sites in various stages of redevelopment, including the Jewish Community Centre directly to the south of the OTC across 41st, which has an approved rezoning, the Oak Ridge Centre Mall at 41st and Canby where construction is underway, and the Heatherlands, a 21-acre site with a recently submitted rezoning application. The OTC is also situated within the boundaries of the Canby Corridor Plan, which serves as the guide for change along Canby Street for the coming decades. The OTC is adjacent to the Oak Ridge Municipal Town Centre, which the Canby Corridor Plan identifies as a vibrant hub of services and amenities with significant new affordable housing and job space for the city region. This rezoning application is being considered under the Oak Ridge Transit Center, or OTC, policy statement, which was developed over an 18-month period that included public engagement opportunities and was adopted in December 2015. The OTC policy statement contemplates redevelopment of the site with a density of 2.1 FSR and buildings up to 15 stories. The policy statement also anticipates local serving commercial, a new park, new childcare facility, and 20% social housing. The OTC policy statement has seven specific guiding principles. These are defining neighborhood identity, providing green space, and neighborhood serving retail, the creation of a mid-rise district, the provision of housing affordability and variety, community connections, and sustainable systems and green infrastructure. All of these guiding principles inform the rezoning application that was sent in by Modern Green, as well as the staff review of the application. Beyond the OTC policy statement, there are numerous other city adopted policies that are considered as part of the staff review. Some specific ones are described here and include the Climate Emergency Response and Subsequent Action Plan, which aim to cut carbon emissions in half by 2030 and achieve carbon neutrality by 2050. There is also the rezoning policy for sustainable large developments, which applies to rezoning sites over two acres like the OTC, and outlines eight subject areas where the applicant must demonstrate leadership. Another is the Housing Vancouver Strategy, which considers housing need for Vancouver residents and provides specific targets for a number of areas, including affordability, family housing, rental housing, and social housing. Finally, another important report is the 2019 Issues Report entitled Direction for the Intensification of Large Sites to Include Moderate Income Rental Housing, which was approved by council in July of 2019. This report allows for the consideration of additional density and height on major project sites like the OTC to support the inclusion of rental housing and includes a 25% target for moderate income rental units. The rezoning application before you tonight incorporates changes from what was initially contemplated in 2015 when the OTC policy statement was approved. These changes reflect new city policies like the 2019 July, the July 2019 Issues Report, public feedback, and direction from council. The key changes are the addition of three lots facing Willow Street to the larger site, an extension of the 39th Avenue alignment from westward into the OTC, a shift to align the new Central Road and its intersection at 41st Avenue with the nearby Jewish Community Centre, a commercial muse parallel to 41st Avenue supporting retail and commercial businesses, an additional 10,000 square feet of commercial space, and finally, added height and density to support the inclusion of rental housing. I will cover these changes in more detail in the discussion of the proposal and the public benefits. With consideration of the aforementioned city policies and the changes since adoption of the OTC policy statement, this rezoning application proposes a total of one point four six eight million square feet, roughly equal to a gross FSR of two-point-three-six. The heights of buildings range from one up to twenty-six stories, and there is a maximum height proposed of two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet. There are a number of major components to this site. The first of these is public space, where the applicant proposes a new street network within the site with connections and upgrades to surrounding streets and infrastructure. This includes enhanced pedestrian and cycling infrastructure that will contribute to a permeable site supportive of active travel, and includes AAA cycling facilities on the new Central Road within the OTC, as well as a pair of east-west muse. One of these muse would be aligned with Thirty-ninth Avenue, while the other would connect the main commercial areas of the site. The commercial muse will also connect to a new public plaza marking the site entry at Forty-first Avenue. Taken in sum, over forty percent of the site will be set aside for public space in the form of streets, muse, plazas, and other open space. The application also proposes twenty-four thousand square feet of commercial space, which would provide local shopping, service, and dining opportunities for future residents. The OTC is envisioned as primarily a housing district and proposes a significant amount of new housing with a total estimate of sixteen-hundred-and-thirty units across the full site. The housing is spread across a variety of tenures and includes social, secured rental, moderate-income rental, and strata residential housing. Overall, it is estimated that social and rental housing will comprise over five hundred units on the site and will offer households the opportunity to live in an amenity-rich location with convenient access to daily needs and transit. The last major component of the rezoning proposal is at the northern end of the site, where the applicant will deliver a new two-acre park, as well as a new sixty-nine-space childcare facility, both of which will be provided turnkey to the city. Public consultation and engagement for the Oakridge Transit Centre has been ongoing for years, including during the policy statement development process. Prior to submission of the rezoning application, the applicant hosted a pre-application open house in April 2019. After the rezoning application was submitted, the city distributed nearly six thousand postcards for a pair of city-hosted open houses in November of 2019. Approximately one hundred thirty-six people came to the city-hosted open houses, where thirty-five provided comments. The majority of these comments were supportive, including general support for the project, the delivery of new rental and social housing, as well as the public park. There were also comments supporting the site design and layout and the project process to date. There were some comments that expressed concerns. These included increased traffic bolt-on to adjacent laneways and nearby streets, parking challenges, and general concern about increases to congestion on both major roads, as well as transit routes resulting from new development. The applicant has submitted both a transportation assessment and management study, as well as a transportation demand management, or TDM, plan. These reports, along with staff conditions in Appendix B of the council report, include measures that support active travel and transit usage, such as substantial cycling facilities, two public bike-share stations, traffic calming measures on nearby streets, and vehicle car sharing. At the start of the year, TransLink also introduced the R4 Rapid Bus along Forty-first Avenue and is in the process of procuring more Canada Line trains, which will increase capacity along the Canada Line. Other comments related to social housing, with some seeking more social housing, and others expressing concerns about the presence of social housing in the area. There were also concerns about a perceived lack of retail space. In May 2020, staff received resubmission of the rezoning application, which relocated some of the residential tenures within the site and increased the maximum height, as well as increasing the retail and commercial space from fourteen thousand to twenty-four thousand square feet. At that time, over sixty-one hundred notifications were distributed, and the public were invited to provide comments or questions on the updated application materials. Of those comments received, there was support for increased building height and retail space, whilst there was also some concerns raised about traffic and transit congestion, the provision of social housing, as well as seeking yet more commercial space. Overall, at the time of resubmission, staff only received an additional twelve comments from people. And on the whole throughout this process, there has not been a significant community concern raised about the OTC proposal. Indeed, the majority of the comments that have been received by staff have been supportive of this proposal. The OTC rezoning application proposes significant public benefits across the site, and these can be understood within the three general categories: connections, housing, and parks and childcare. The OTC will provide a new street network on the site that will include sidewalks, street trees, cycling infrastructure, and electric vehicle infrastructure along the Central Road, as well as a secondary road fronting the park and a new laneway. There will be a pair of pedestrian muse crossing east-west through the site. One, aligned with Thirty-ninth Avenue, will connect from Oak Street to the new park and onward towards Canby Street. The second is a commercial muse near the southern end of the site, parallel to Forty-first Avenue. The commercial muse will face retail spaces, enlivening the commercial environment while contributing to a highly porous pedestrian network. Adjacent to the commercial muse, the site entry along Forty-first Avenue will be marked by a new public plaza. This will be an outdoor space that supports local businesses and community activities, as well as other opportunities for gathering. In addition to the new streets and muse, the existing lanes and streets bordering the site will also be upgraded. Among these improvements is a one point eight million dollar CAC that is intended to enhance safety and comfort for pedestrians and cyclists along Forty-first Avenue between the OTC and eastward towards Canby Street. Housing is another aspect where the OTC proposes a significant contribution. A large parcel of land, nearly two-point-five acres, will be dedicated to the city with space allocated for approximately three hundred and thirty social housing units. Half of these units would be suitable for families, and the applicant would deliver approximately one hundred and seventy-five of the social housing units as turnkey units to the city. These turnkey units represent an opportunity for the city to pursue deeper levels of affordability at the time of occupancy, when affordability levels are set and a nonprofit operator is selected. There are also conditions to include four to eight licensed family childcare units within the social housing. These units are designed to allow for in-home childcare and support additional childcare spaces on the site. The OTC will also deliver one hundred and eighty secured rental housing units, all within the first phase. Twenty-five percent of this rental floor space, equal to approximately forty-five units, will be secured as moderate-income rental units. Finally, the OTC will also mean a new public park and childcare facility. These are situated at the northern end of the site, where the applicant will build and dedicate sixty-nine-space childcare facility to the city. This will include outdoor play areas, one of which will be available for public use outside of childcare facility hours. As the centerpiece of the site, there will be a new two-acre public park. The park is anticipated to include a sports field and will be designed and developed as part of a future process led by the park's board. An additional feature will be the inclusion of two universally accessible public washrooms that will be attached to the childcare building and available for park users and the public. The public benefits across the OTC application total a significant contribution to a number of city goals and priorities. The overall amount of these contributions, inclusive of in-kind amenities, a cash CAC, public art, and citywide and utilities DCL, is estimated at over one hundred fourteen million. The proposed public benefits have been reviewed by real estate staff, who have concluded that the public benefits offered are appropriate for this site. As a large development, the OTC is intended to be built out in four distinct phases over a number of years. Development would be expected first at the southern end of the site and worked north from there. It is estimated that the full buildup of the site will take between ten and twelve years. This July, council considered referral of the OTC rezoning application to a public hearing. At that time, council approved the motion shown here in blue, referring the report, rather, to staff with specific direction to try to find more housing affordability and to ensure that the plans include measures to achieve climate emergency targets. Staff have addressed those directions and shared the outcomes with council through the memos included with this report as Appendixes J and K. The OTC report was then referred by council in October to this public hearing. With regard to the housing element of the council motion, staff explored four distinct options that would increase the provision of affordable housing. After evaluation of these options, the ultimate recommendation was to add a further twenty-four thousand square feet to the social housing component. This is equal to roughly thirty additional units and raises the total number of social housing units to approximately three hundred and thirty. With regard to the climate emergency, this was a response that was approved by council in 2019 and set a framework for reducing the city's carbon emissions. This included both a number of accelerated actions, as well as six big moves. And the intent and outcomes of these big moves are reflected in the OTC rezoning application. The first big move intends to have ninety percent of residents living within a five-minute walk or roll of daily amenities. The OTC is one of the most centrally-located large parcels in Vancouver, with easy walking, rolling, and cycling access to many local amenities. As the Oakridge Municipal Town Centre develops, it is anticipated that more of these amenities and daily needs will be provided through new development. The OTC itself is an example of this, contributing the new park, childcare facility, commercial space, and affordable housing. The second of the big moves seeks to have two-thirds of trips by active travel modes, like walking and cycling, and by transit. The OTC is also anticipated to meet and exceed this goal, and we note that it is served by local bus lines, the R4 Rapid Bus along Forty-first between UBC and the Joyce-Collingwood Expo Line, and the Canada Line Station at Canby and Forty-first, which provides access to downtown, Central Broadway, Richmond, and YVR. There are also proposed transportation demand management measures and conditions in this report that will further support active travel through local transportation improvements, enhance pedestrian and cyclist safety and connectivity, car-share vehicles, and public bike-share stations on the site. Big move number three sets a goal that half of all kilometers driven in Vancouver will be by electric vehicles. At the OTC, this means that per the parking bylaw, ten percent of commercial parking spaces and one hundred percent of residential parking spaces will be equipped for EV charging. There are also conditions to provide six DC fast-charging hub stations on the site within the public realm and available for public use. Big move number four aims to cut carbon emissions from building operations in half. This objective is achieved through existing city bylaws, requiring that new buildings produce seventy percent fewer carbon emissions through the course of their operations. The fifth big move seeks to reduce the embodied carbon emissions from new construction by forty percent. It is managed through updates to the Vancouver Building Bylaw, and buildings at the OTC will meet this, as well as the city's green buildings policy for rezoning. In the future, the city-owned buildings on the site will also demonstrate leadership through designs that will achieve both LEED Gold and Passive House certification. Each of the big moves on this slide are supported by policy and bylaws, which are expected to adapt and improve over time to produce better and more sustainable outcomes. As the OTC builds out, new construction will be subject to future amendments to city regulations like the Vancouver Building Bylaw, Parking Bylaw, and the Green Buildings Policy for rezoning. This ensures that development remains on the leading edge of the climate emergency response with regard to green mobility and sustainable construction. The final big move sets a goal to annually remove one million tons of carbon through the restoration of forest and coastal ecosystems by 2060. While the OTC is not a coastal site, it would change from one that is largely covered with impermeable paved surface to one with significant tree canopy and vegetative cover. It would also form part of a broader ecological system of green spaces with existing and envisioned parks nearby. On-site, a five-meter-wide bioswale along the Central Road will form a highly-visible piece of green infrastructure and frame a system that meets city goals to capture and clean water on-site. This will both reduce the burden on civic infrastructure, while also improving the quality of water downstream. In summary, staff support the rezoning application to the Oakridge Transit Centre and the public benefits that it proposes. Staff feel that the proposal complies with the OTC policy statement, the July 2019 Issues Report, and council's July 2020 motion, and recommend that the application be approved, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the report. Thank you for attention, and staff are available for any questions.
Thank you so much. Just going to ask if I look through my script here, one second. Right, and we have applicant team here as well, who I believe also has a deck.
Madam Clark, this is James Chang from the applicant team. We're not able to see the presentation for some reason. We were able to watch the previous two, but not our presentation. So, we actually have to look at the public streaming, and that seems to be delayed to the talking. So, I'm just wondering-
Yeah, it's about a twenty-second delay.
Okay.
So, we can just take our time on the way through, just to make sure you make all your points.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
How are we?
Yep, so the first slide says applicant team.
Okay, great. Mr. Mayor and council, my name is James Chang. I'm the architect for this rezoning. I'll be speaking on behalf of the applicant team. You should, if we could see it, the first slide on the screen should be the applicant team, including the owner of Modern Green Canada, us as the architect, landscape architect is PFS Studio. We also have our sustainability consultant, Integral Group, as well as Peter Joyce from Bun Associates for Transportation, and we will all be available to answer any questions you may have. Next slide, please. And what we're hoping to do is show you what somebody's vision that is proposed in the Greater City 2020 Action Plan and the Climate Emergency Action Plan could be, how it could be realized. One thing, as Susan Hayde was saying, I reflect on how lucky we are that the goals and vision of council is very much in alignment of our client's desire to build a green community and a sustainability committee. Our client has have a track record of building such communities, both in Canada and abroad, and some of them have achieved international acclaim. So, it is really, really, we're really excited to have the opportunity to do that. Next, please. So, as staff has already mentioned about what is the public realm on the site, I just want to show you where some of these places are created. The number one is the two-acre park. In addition to the park and the childcare facility, we have created a series of internal courtyards for the residents to enjoy. We're proposing to use extensive green roofs that would allow urban agriculture, as well as edible landscape, that would foster biodiversity. We would have a series of public muse and pathways to connect to the community. These public muse and plazas would serve as public open space that would allow for community activities. So, the first is sustainable site design, access to nature, and also to, sorry, pardon me, to have edible landscape, and so on. Sorry, the slide's jumping, so I just want to catch up. Okay, the next slide is to show you, the picture on the left is the massing, showing currently the social housing block, and the picture on the right is actually a project in Sydney of a similar scale, where they utilize the roof for urban agriculture, for social gathering, and on the ground plane, there's a children's play space, as well as edible landscape, and so on. And you may notice that there's opportunity for photovoltaic and solar collection on the roof as well. So, in our proposal, we will have community garden, edible landscape, as well as neighborhood food access. Access. Next, please. The picture on the right is our computer rendering of the muse that we're proposing, and in the center of the muse, those cubicles you see are actually used for community fruit market, as well as other community events. So, these are convertible spaces that people could set up for arts fair, for books fair, or other community activity. The two pictures on the left is actually a food market in Prague and one in Melbourne, Australia. So, you can imagine how this active space will be for the community at large. Next, please. And in addition to that, we have plazas and other pathways, and we're proposing that rainwater and groundwater management through this new type of substrate, which is called Gromax, so water can actually go through and replenish the soil, even though it's going through like a concrete substance. Next, please. And as Zach has said, we have a five-meter bioswale running through along the major road, and so it will help collect rainwater and groundwater management and allow using permeable material to replenish the aquifer that is below our site. Next, please. And this picture on, the two picture on the right actually are real examples of bioswales. One is in Toronto, and one is in St. Louis. So, the character that we're proposing will be almost exactly the same. And by the way, the picture in Toronto is done by our landscape consultant, PFS. Next, please. And you can see the tree canopy that will be growing. And then, in addition to the city's rainwater and groundwater management, we're hoping, proposing to collect rainwater as the building is cascading down- proposing to collect rainwater as the building is cascading down. We have a large, several series of terraces and these terraces will be green, filled with planters and gardens. So we hope to achieve a vertical green as this project shown in Milan for some of our taller buildings to bring the ground level green up skywards. Next, please. And then, of course, resilience is a major concern today. And with the park and with the childcare, where that these spaces could be repurposed during the emergency to, for responses as like COVID, if we needed tent area and so on. Next, please. And in addition to what the city goes, we think social sustainability is also very important. So we're proposing that the rooftop access is made available to the residents and also large gathering spaces to allow for incidental, accidental, uh, social interaction. So allowing children and neighbors to visit and, and play with each other and, and make contact. Next, please. And the other thing that we would want to mention is cultural and heritage. As Zach has mentioned, this is the Transit Centre and that his, that bit of history with the rectifier station will remain on site. And that we hope to, through public art and other implementation, we will reflect the heritage of the First Nations. Next, please. In addition to that, we're hoping to use renewable material to reduce the carbon as well as a low carbon body design, as well as carbon sequestration. And wood being a renewable resources, we hope to use a large portion of that within our development. I think that's my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I could probably just ask councillors to go on mute. And I do have a couple of councillors on the queue for questions. Again, council, this is your only chance to ask applicants' questions. Councillor Frye, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. I think that, that was a bit of a holdover, but I, but I'm happy to ask some questions of the applicants.
Sure.
You know, first off, I mean, what an exciting project. I'm old enough to remember when that was the bus parking lot back in the day. And to see it go from being a parking lot to something of such vision, this is a really, really quite exciting to see a whole new opportunity like this unfolding, especially with the amount of public green space. Or is the applicant, are you, are you satisfied with the, with the general direction? I mean, you sound quite excited about how this is going. Do you see any, any opportunities for improvements on this? Do you think that this is exactly as you imagined it?
We are extremely excited about the opportunity. And I have to say, I've been watching council's reaction and I'm really, first, I'm very happy that you made an amendment to allow more increase in affordable housing on site. Secondly, I think through the Issues Report, you supported additional height. By having additional height, allow us to open up the ground plane. We could not have provided the public plaza and the mews if we weren't allowed to go up a little higher. So I think those moves really helped inform the project. And the second thing that really helped is we were able to acquire three lots on Willow Street that allow us to make a connection to the existing community. I think staff has done a really wonderful job on the Oakridge area planning. So 39th Avenue connecting through and then eventually going east towards Van Dusen Garden is, makes a lot of shortcut for the neighborhood. So make this site truly available and porous to the existing neighborhood. And those were some of the key elements I'm really excited about for us.
That's fantastic feedback. I'm wondering on the, on the parking piece, obviously, you know, with the Climate Emergency Action Plan and some of the direction we've established and the proximity to the Canada Line, the fact that this is a real sort of transit oriented development, could we have done a bit better with maybe less parking? And would that have resulted in even more opportunities for public benefit and public realm?
I think the policy is allow us to, is already permitting us to work with staff. And I think all of us are working together to try to visualize what the city parking situation would be like 10 years from now. And the way we're planning the underground parking is trying to make it as flexible as possible so there could be future uses, should we no longer need so many cars and stuff like that. I think your staff has been thinking about that quite a bit. And because of the connection to transit and so on, I think that kind of spaces would be able to be converted.
Thanks, Mr. Chang. I'm really happy to hear about the parking flexibility. I'm gonna pass the mic to councillor Hardwick.
Yep, councillor Hardwick, thanks. Up, up to five minutes. And councillor, I'll just remind you, although it doesn't, shouldn't impede you, that we have nine speakers currently on the list. Thanks councillor Hardwick. Go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay, my question, my question, thank you. My question is for staff, if staff are available.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm interested to know who you think is going to live in this development? There's across the street, just down the way, we've got Oakridge. We talked about Jericho Lands, Dogwood Lodge, Heatherlands, all these massive developments. And I'm interested to know what you think is going to drive the growth in terms of, of population and what kind of jobs you're expecting that the people that are going to come and live here are going to take. So who's going to live here? What jobs are going to attract them? And apart from just thinking of the develop itself, what's going, you know, what is going to drive? We don't have our resource industries. Is it just that we're building more capacity or what's going to drive it?
Thank you councillor Hardwick for the question. This is Zach Bennett again. In terms of the who will be living here question, the OTC is one component of a larger area within the Oakridge Municipal Town Centre. So that's envisioned as the large secondary point within the region and it's the only municipal town centre within the city of Vancouver. So the OTC is considered to be one of a large site within the area as well as other anticipated redevelopment that would create a high density hub with employment around the area.
Okay, so, so, let me get into that. So what we've been observing though, is that there was a tremendous amount of offshore pre-sales of the, the condos in particular contemplated for, for Oakridge. And really that's what has driven that expectation of growth was the ability to be selling offshore and attracting people in here. And that, of course, has been significantly impacted. We've seen that with the province's speculation tax. We've seen that with the city's empty home tax. So if we're not going to be selling and attracting offshore buyers the way that we were, what kind of jobs are going to be driving people to come here? Because it is opportunity, it's always been an opportunity that has brought people to this part of the world.
Hi councillors, Dan Garrison, Director of Housing Policy and Regulation. Thanks for the question. Just jump in to add that, you know, at the height of the challenges we were experiencing with, with sort of problematic foreign investment, the numbers we saw in terms of purchasing new units, when the province and federal government started collecting the data by foreign, foreign, foreign owners was in the sort of, was in the less than 20% range, it was around 19%, I think was the highest number we saw of new product being purchased. So that's still left 80 plus percent of the units being purchased by locals. I think one of the things that we need to think about is we do have, there is a significant number of owners of single detached properties that are, of course, worth quite a, quite a significant amount. Those folks living in those are at the point where they're, they're going to be looking at downsizing. And I do agree with you that we were seeing a significant amount of activity in the foreign ownership market in the Canby corridor, but we've also seen a fair amount of, of purchasing by locals who were downsizing into those units. So there is a, there are a number of markets for those units, but I also need to remind-
But orders of magnitude.
But I also need to remind you, we are securing 330 units of social housing through this and 180 units of rental, 45 of which will be at secured moderate income rent. So certainly there are a significant number of condo units in this proposal, but there-
And what jobs will they be working on?
I think just, if we can just let the staff finish their sentences, go ahead, Mr. Garrison, just complete it and then-
Yeah, sure. I mean, tho- those are the, those are the range of low and moderate income folks that we have living in the community. So in rental, we'll be seeing opportunities for key workers in the areas of, when you look at teachers and nurses and a, a range of folks that live and work in our communities. When you get into social housing, there's a range there from very low income folks who have challenges with income, up through moderate income folks who have trouble affording the full market. And so there's a, there's a range of affordability being provided here for people that live and work in, in the city.
I, I hear what you're saying, but it's still not answering the fundamentals of my question and I'm out of time, so I'll just have to keep coming back to it. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thank you. I have three questions for the applicants.
Okay.
And the first one is just on the social housing piece and the additional 30 units that you're able to deliver. I understand through the incremental 24,000 square feet that were added. And I wonder if you can just reaffirm where and how the 24,000 square feet is added and if the size of those additional 30 social housing units will be similar to the others that were proposed in the first round?
It's Dan Garrison jumping in again. Oh, is this the applicant that you're asking councillor?
The applicant, yes, to the applicant.
Pardon me.
Perhaps councillor Kirby Young, if we go through all three of it, if does that work for you and then?
Well, there, the, the other one related, I, I think it's quicker to just do it this way.
Okay, sure, go, go right ahead, yep.
Okay. As Susan Hig has said earlier, a large site offer us flexibility to plan. So when we did the initial massing, we actually enlarged the envelope by at least five to 10%. So that would allow the future architect to plan the building, to have roof, to shave and carve, to make them interesting. So the other thing is we collect, collected all the social housing onto one large dirt site with only about 30% site coverage. So it has to achieve-
Can I maybe just clarify my question for simplicity?
Sure.
Did you go up in height to achieve the extra 30 social housing units?
No, we did not. We were able to fit the extra density within the envelope that we submitted to the design panel. So we did not change the massing to accommodate that additional-
That's really helpful. Uh, thank you. I'm gonna keep going for time because I have limited time, but I appreciate the answer. The other question is on the social housing units also, and again for the applicant. I see that it's listed as a 10 to 12 year build out and the social housing delivery does not come in until towards the end of phase two and phase three. Is there any way to deliver the social housing earlier in this project?
If I, I'm gonna need staff to help on this, but as far as I can remember, the first part of the social housing is actually delivered immediately because part of the CAC is going towards the construction of the first phase of the social housing. The remainder, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, is to come when the funding is available.
Because we have a slide that shows it coming in in phase two, social housing, turnkey.
Yes.
That, that is correct councillor, the, the turnkey housing's coming in phase two. Phase one, it is part of the phasing plan to move from the south end of the site to the north. The phase one is the high density phase along 41st, which includes the rental.
Okay, right.
And immediately after that, we get into the social housing parcel.
So the question is, just to clarify, is there any way to speed up the delivery of the social housing units?
We could certainly try. At this point, we have to work out, you know, the enactment and all the, because we have to go through the DP process and stuff, so we would certainly go back and talk with staff to see if we could move that up faster.
Okay, I'd be very interested to hear more about that. Thank you. And then my third and my final question is also for the applicant and it's on the retail. And I wonder if you can speak a bit more to what the vision is for what kind of retail? And given the nature of Oakridge being more shopping destination or shopping center, do you have a vision for more locally serving retailer or what are you aiming for?
Exactly what you said. We want mom and pop retail. We want to be opposite of Oakridge. And that's why we created a pedestrian mews, a mews behind 41st so that the retail could front onto a, a mews so that the people could spend time there. Because we're concerned that 41st is going to be full of buses and heavily trafficked and it could be quite dusty. So we wanted to have-
So could it be local, local corner, sort of grocery store, coffee shop, small, small amenities, small restaurant, anything like that?
Exactly. And we purposely laid out the spaces that large retail store cannot fit. We, we, we're restricting the depth to 65 feet and we hope to have narrower fridges. So by nature of that, only the smaller and medium sized retailer could fit into our project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chang.
Thank you. That's five exactly. Councillor Carr, up to five.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have questions for the applicant and I'm particularly interested in the measures to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions and to achieve action, the necessary measures around the emergency that we have around climate, the climate actions. So apropos of that, I noticed that you've talked about buildings, the carbon being reduced to 70% emissions. These buildings are going to be, like if it's a five year build out or however long it is, by 2050, we have to be at net zero. So have you thought about if you're, you're only at some of your buildings at 70% reduction in carbon, so I'm assuming 30% is still producing carbon, how you're going to get to net zero in the 20 to 25 years to, when we have to be at net zero?
I will answer some of your questions. We also have our sustainability consultant in the room that also can add to it. There's a couple of parts to the construction problem that as an industry we're facing. One is we're trying to help mitigate that by using mass timber construction like CLT and so on that council, I think you're quite familiar with. Second is we're going to explore more modular construction where we are not carrying heavy concrete and all and steel and so on, on site. We will prefabricate and ship to the site and assemble so that reduce a lot of, you know, construction greenhouse gas emission. And third is through technology, and I think our sustainability consultant can supplement that by introducing photovoltaic and other energy generation to mitigate some of the other stuff. And of course, electric car and other things are going to be major part. Kevin, would you like to add something to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So to, to maybe just make this super efficient and address specifically the operational energy story with the project. As staff had alluded to, you know, we are falling in line with the green building rezoning policy. And with that comes those prescriptive greenhouse gas intensity targets which we're, we're focusing on. To your point councillor Carr, you know, our main intention with that is to do it through, you know, primarily a means of a low carbon energy system. So the emissions that we're dealing with right now, those fossil fuels are primarily attributed to the use of natural gas only for kind of that peak demand, right? So, you know, just given limitations of technology at this point in time, we do have this small kind of shoulder of, of heating demand that has to be compensated for with a little bit of fossil fuel. You know, as we understand the building more, as we understand the energy profiles more and certainly as the build out kind of extends into the future and recognizing that 2050 target, that's one of the first things we look to further electrify, which gets us that much further in advance of, you know, reducing our, our operational greenhouse gas intensities. And then as James had alluded to, you know, really looking at how we kind of fit in renewable energies and, and find spaces to, to make those types of technologies work without compromising on kind of the occupant and, and, you know, obviously the, the livability of the site as well. So it is absolutely on our radar and it is the type of thing that, you know, we intend on understanding a little bit more of as we get into the detailed engineering of the systems.
Good to know. Technology, of course, is changing all the time and so it's obviously important- Good to know. Um, technology, of course, is changing all the time, and so it's obviously important to look at how, um, maybe increase efficiency, um, of some of a, um, the, uh, zero GHG, especially the, the, um.
Questions here now.
Solar hot water, et cetera. Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that reminder. In terms of, um, the, uh, point that was made around the orientation of buildings, I think this was on page 13, yeah, 13 of the report. Orientation of buildings to achieve solar access, has that changed since the, um, um, application came forward before? I was very keen to see, um, as a look at a development of this size and scope, uh, to be thinking about solar access as, uh, probably the demand will increase, um, for distributed energy in the future.
Absolutely. That's one slide I took out. Actually, we have a slide that actually demonstrated how four different facades of the building could be varied to, to respond to climate. And the other thing we're hoping to do with vertical green is in addition, just doing passive house, we're using trees and vegetation to help shape the solar gain side.
Thanks so much. Thank you. We're at the five minutes. Uh, moving to counsel. Thanks. Just moving the council. We, just a reminder, Counselor, we have nine speakers at about maybe five minutes apiece. So that's 45 minutes. Um, just, uh, just to let you know, we're just at five to nine. Uh, Counselor, we about the five minutes?
Yeah, I'm looking at the sustainability plan. A lot of these are not aspects we look on smaller properties. So, um, sustainable food systems, the greenways, the heritage interpretation. I'm wondering, um, how did you find integrating those in the project? And how do you think they make our projects better by finding ways to incorporate sustainable food systems and habitat restoration in a project like this? Including stuff like organics management, and there's some really interesting things, 30% people having plots. So how did you, how was that, how was it that you were able to incorporate that into the project?
Okay, well, that comes on all levels. So in, I, I think as our Plaza of Nation project, we, the city already instigated a, a post occupancy, um, menu and, and checkup system to make sure all the composting and everything is followed. So that's one of them. The second thing is by, uh, us controlling a large portion of the site, we are able to specify with the landscape architect, the type of landscaping that could be on the ground, and then what we could put on the roof and the terraces. And that helps us to create that diversity and also allow us to have some sort of, uh, uh, community garden and community kitchen and so on throughout the site. So it is going to be a joint effort and it's an ongoing effort with all the consultants working together. So our landscape architects, our sustainability consultant, as well as our engineers are all, you know, i- i- it's, it's an integrated process. It's not splitting it up one item after another, but it's actually trying to find a synergy to put all these things together. So they actually work better as a group than individually. And the cultural heritage and the, um, memory of the transit station, uh, I like to remind council, we do have a rectifier station that's going to be still functional for the next 10 years or so. We, we're building a new one, and we're going to incorporate some of that, uh, memory of the transit site and inform the public of this. And we hope to actually keep some of the poles that is used for cable to use as street lamps and repurpose on site to remind people that used to be a transit system running through this site. So again, we are working with all the parties involved and trying to create and weave together a total story rather than pieces. I, I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you. We can listen to speakers.
There, I was on mute. Thanks. Um, Counselor, on to speakers next. Clerks, if you can help here, we're at, um, speaker number one is Eldad Goldfarb.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
I sure can. Up to five minutes, please. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Eldad Goldfarb, and I'm the Executive Director of the Jewish Community Center, the JCC, and also a resident of Vancouver. As, uh, the architects have mentioned, we're at, uh, the direct neighbors to the south of the Oak Ridge Transit Centre. And we would like to provide our full support for this proposal for the following reason. Uh, reason number one is we believe that the proposal creates a unique opportunity for collaboration between the JCC and Modern Green to create an inclusive community hub with the provision of social rental and below market rental housing across both of our properties. What a fantastic opportunity for the city and the community this, this is going to be. Our neighbors, uh, have already generously offered their assistance with arranging for parking alternatives for the JCC during our construction. The proposal creates a city building opportunity at this important note. The Modern Green site is currently vacant, and we welcome its redevelopment and the public benefits that will come with it, especially the new retail, the new park, public plaza, and much more. We believe that these benefits will com- complete the neighborhood and our property. We also welcome the new residents who will live here and look forward to serving them at the JCC through our various programs, including the community centers, daycares, fitness and aquatic centers, arts and cultural amenities, and the education opportunities for the neighborhood through its JCC programming and exhibit. We look forward to seeing the redevelopment proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for calling in tonight. I don't see any questions from, um, uh, council for you, so I am going to move on to the next speaker. Uh, Counsel, the next speaker is, um, uh, Ezra Shanken.
Hello?
Hi there. Uh, thanks for calling in. I can. Uh, you have up to five minutes. Whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Wonderful, wonderful. Uh, thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you so much, Council. Um, I'm Ezra Shanken. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Jewish Federation of Greater Vancouver. Uh, it's a privilege to be able to speak today, uh, tonight in front, in, sort of in front of you, but really in my basement. Um, and, uh, if, uh, council meetings are going to be like this and so convenient, I might just, uh, sign up for some more slots. Uh, this is really, uh, this is really nice. I can do this from home. Uh, but first, I, 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 first and foremost, I, I do want to take one second of my time to say, uh, thank you to each and every one of you. I know how hard you've been working. Uh, I, as a community, we know how hard you've been working, and, uh, this has been obviously an incredibly challenging time. We appreciate everything that you're doing. Um, you know, I want to echo everything that my, my partner and, uh, our, our head of our JCC, Eldad Goldfarb, just said. Obviously, we have a, uh, an absolutely, uh, unique opportunity to create a, a really beautiful, uh, ecosystem, uh, between, uh, our redevelopment site, uh, at the JCC site and what's going on, uh, at, at the transit site. Uh, the, you know, the more, the, the more density we have, the more, the more affordable rental we have, more social housing we have, um, really, uh, creates a, a whole new reality, uh, for, for residents, uh, who are looking to live and to work and to, to be in the city. We knew that this was a problem, uh, you know, that, that we needed more affordable rentals when we put our own proposal forward, and we're so glad to see, uh, the Modern Green site, uh, uh, moving in the direction we're, we're moving in and, in, in making sure that those are available, especially the childcare and social housing. Um, we, we see this as, as very symbiotic. Um, the more, the more people that, that are, that are brought into this, this dense core, the, the, the more opportunity there is for them to take advantage of what we have at, at the JCC. So, uh, we are, we are very excited to see, uh, our partners across the street develop this into really a once in a, a generation, a second, what we would consider a once in a generation project, because we consider our own a once in a generation project. And I am just beyond excited, uh, to see what, what this, what this all turns out to be, uh, when we're all done with the work that we have to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for calling in this evening. I don't see any questions from council for you, so I'll just thank you so much for, for calling in and your kind words towards the work we've been doing here. Thank you. Where, uh, Richard Tam was on the list, but, uh, Counsel, he has sent in a letter. Uh, that should be in your inbox if you'd like to read that. So he is withdrawn as speaking in public. We have now Kristy Anderson.
Hello?
Hi there. Uh, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Great. Hi there. Hi, my name is Kristy Anderson, and, um, I, first of all, would love to thank all of you guys again for your service. Being on councilor and mayor, I think it's a hard job and it's hard to please everybody, and it's tough to make tough decisions. So, um, I thank you guys for, um, for doing that and helping us through COVID. I think we're doing quite well, uh, as a community, so, uh, thank you for that. So, uh, I live across the street in a six story development, um, in a corner apartment that directly faces, uh, this project. Uh, my unit is actually in the northwest. I can, I can see, um, the project from my house. It will probably block about 60% of my view, and the construction will probably not be fun. With that said, I am calling in and speaking in full support of the project. Uh, why? Because I think that the community at large is really in need of housing, um, for, of all types. You know, market rental, uh, social, all types of housing, as well as the amenities that are provided. And I, you know, I think that's more important than, uh, somebody's view or a few years of construction. Uh, in full disclosure, I do work for an architecture firm that does do, uh, rezoning, uh, in the Candy Corridor and, and also, uh, in the Oak Ridge Corridor. And, um, and what I wanted to say was I really appreciated how the, uh, planning went back and looked at additional density for this site because, um, you know, I think something, everyone always applauds the amenities and thinks they're, they're fantastic, but I think a lot of people forget that the only way that those can be provided is if, um, if the project makes money. They can't, uh, give, put money towards amenities if they don't have economic feasibility. And, and also, the project often can't be built, uh, because they can't get bank financing if they can't prove economic feasibility. Um, and of course, uh, as I know from working through planning, I know that, um, that it's a long process that they, they work with the, the real estate department to, to, to work out what that should be. But, um, I feel like often because these, uh, processes are so long, for example, they mentioned it was, uh, it started in 2014, that the, the cost and, and the changing policy, um, sometimes it happens long after even that this is approved. So for example, the, uh, the building code has been changed, uh, sustainability requirements keep going up and up, and that increases the cost throughout, um, the timeframe that they're trying to sell and phase the project, um, which then really can chop down the margins and, and sometimes, uh, stall the project because maybe the, they, they can't sell it at a price that makes it feasible to secure bank financing and build. So I think that it was really smart that planning went back and said, hey, you know, let's add some additional density, not only for rental, but I mean, also for market to make sure that they can provide these, uh, amenities. And, and, uh, just on, on, on two notes, uh, uh, another counselor had asked about what jobs, um, you know, were going to be provided for these people. And I think that something we need to remember is that our largest job force, the baby boomers, are, are retiring, uh, in, in droves, and we're having, we're facing an extreme shortage of labor, uh, everywhere. I, I, I know, uh, my friend's a teacher and they, they can't find teachers. I know in my, um, industry architects, it's very, very, very difficult to find qualified, uh, people to do the work. And, you know, just a simple Google, I was, uh, Googling it while, while she was speaking, and it, you know, it shows that it's slowing the economy and it, 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 uh, is, it, 39% of small and medium businesses are already, um, finding, having difficulty finding new workers. So I think we need to think about that. Um, the other thing is I think, uh, that's probably one of the reasons that Trudeau just, um, passed this initiative to bring a lot of immigrants in so that we can, uh, fill those jobs. And, and, uh, roughly, I think, 40,000, uh, new immigrants came to Vancouver in 2019. Where are those people going to live? I mean, this is only what, two or 3,000 homes? So I, I mean, I think we have a long way to go, but we need to keep that, that, uh, goal in sight and remember how livable Vancouver is and how many people love to live here. And, and I think that International Mosaic that we are is what makes us a great community and, and that's it. Yeah. Sorry, am I, I, I overspeak my five minutes there?
Sorry, you've got, you've got about, uh, 25 seconds left.
Oh, anyways, uh, and that's all I'd like to say. And I, so I support the project and I applaud planning for adding extra density. And, and, um, frankly, I think the amenity package is, goes above and beyond what's needed. Uh, there's a, it's next to Vandu's and Parkin's. There's another like 12 acre park, one block south, and there's a Queen E Park to the east here, five minutes. So, I mean, I thought that was really nice of them to put an extra park, but yeah.
Thanks.
That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you so much for, uh, participating tonight and your energy at nine o'clock. Appreciate it. We are, uh, and there's no, uh, questions for you on the, uh, from council, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thanks again so much for participating. Let's see. Uh, Counsel, we're, we're on next to Sharon Gregson, Speaker number five.
Hello. Good evening, um, Mayor and Council. Lovely to have the opportunity to, um, speak with you this evening. I'm, um, calling in. You won't be probably surprised to know to speak to the childcare component of the project. I'm, uh, would like to say in favor of the project that it is good news for the city that there are four childcare centers planned in the development that would include care for infants and toddlers and three to five year olds. And then there's a fourth flexible space which is designated as a preschool. And I'd like to suggest that you, um, be, instruct that there be some creativity with that fourth childcare center and that rather than it be another preschool, which is a, um, a type of childcare that is just, uh, two or three hours, typically in the morning, a couple of times a week, and which cities own, the city's own data proves is not a needed kind of care in the, in the city. There's already an overabundance of that type of care. I'd like to suggest that staff, um, work to ensure that that fourth childcare center is something new and creative and innovative, um, that speaks to providing childcare on a flexible basis for families. So, um, that is the kind of care that is developing that serves families outside of the traditional Monday to Friday, nine to five, five days a week kind of care. So, uh, to add that into the, the planning for that fourth space. It is very good news that these four childcare centers will be turnkey for the not pro- non-for-profit operator. So that's good news. Speaks to Vancouver being a leader still across the country in requiring developers to provide a turnkey, high quality center with furnishings. I would like to draw your attention to three potential, um, negatives which I think need to be addressed. One is the, um, mention of the housing units, including some units that are designated for licensed family childcare. The city's own report, um, by a, a very credible researcher, shows that those can be problematic in the long term, that if they're designated to, for a family childcare provider, when that family childcare, childcare provider moves out, you have to find a new one to move in, and if you can't, the space can sit empty or unused or not for its designed purpose. So I would be very cautious about designating, um, dedicated family childcare units, um, because of the problematic long-term issues. I also, um, have concerns with there being a shared playground. That is very difficult to maintain shared space with the public when you're operating a licensed childcare program. And I think that that should perhaps be reconsidered. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, um, I have concerns that the childcare programs won't be in existence for another 10 to 12 years. And I appreciate that the, the childcare programs are situated next to the park, which will be the construction marshaling area while the housing units are being prioritized. And I can fully appreciate why housing would be prioritized. But I think it's a mistake to not also prioritize childcare and find a way, a creative way, um, to look at the childcare site coming on much sooner than 10 to 12 years. Children born now will be in grade six and finish, finishing elementary school, uh, at that rate. So, um, overall, very glad to see that childcare is being prioritized as part of the development. That's important and as it should be, uh, but I would ask, um, Counselor to direct staff to go back and look at those three areas of concern.
Thanks so much. I'm going to, you have questions? Uh, Counselor Swanson? You might be on mute there, Counselor Swanson.
Hi. Thanks so much for coming in. I'm wondering if for the licensed family childcare, you can suggest, um, alternate ways of using that space or? childcare, you can suggest, um, alternate ways of using that space or how would you think it should be done? I was wondering about it too, because doesn't that mean it's kind of profit-making childcare instead of nonprofit?
Yes. The family childcare providers, um, are, are, um, businesses, um, and it's not a not-for-profit situation. So, I would say that in order to, sometimes the advantage of family childcare is that it is more flexible for families. You can start earlier in the morning, you can end up the day later, perhaps even evenings or weekends. And that's why I think that the, the fourth center, um, should be designated as a flexible childcare center that can meet those, um, more, uh, uh, non-standard hours of care that families might need.
So, if, but if there are places in the development that are designated for family childcare, can you think of, um, an alternate use? Like, should they just be regular housing units and then we should focus on making that fourth space, uh, a nonprofit, flexible childcare place?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Dejanova?
Hi there. Um, thank you very much for the question, uh, Ms. Gregson. As I ironically just, uh, put my own child to bed. Uh, but I, I just, uh, wanted to ask you quickly if, um, possible, because we are considering this. And when we think about this, this is a community. We're talking about an entire community that we're considering here. There are different components to it. But childcare, hearing from childcare providers, uh, that they can't find space in Vancouver, that, um, Vancouver requires more outdoor space than any other municipality in B.C. I think it's, it's almost twice the space. Is that something that, I mean, how, how would you suggest sort of we look at this in, in the trade-off of serving kids versus having that extra outdoor space that the city of Vancouver requires?
So, when we look at the amount of outdoor space that, um, the licensing requires compared to what the city of Vancouver requires, um, the licensing regulations now are less than a parking stall per child for outdoor play.
Yeah.
And there are, there are many other places in the world that would consider that absolutely abhorrent, um, to put children in such tiny little spaces. And so, it is a balancing act between making sure that the care we're providing is high-quality, um, and creating those same, the spaces that we need. And we, we put that priority on elementary schools. We make sure that when we open schools that we've got outdoor space, um, to go along with it. We don't sacrifice that in elementary schools. And so, we shouldn't sacrifice it in childcare either. If we prioritize childcare, then we can find a way to make it work.
That's great to know. And my apologies, it, it was just a little bit delayed there. But I, I appreciate, uh, just, just in your answer at the end, um, perhaps it's, it's, uh, my device. But I also had another follow-up question. I have a motion coming forward, uh, soon. I postponed it in hopes that some of the childcare work that our staff are undertaking, um, would come back. And, and I was hoping almost it would be something that could be applied to a project such as this. So, when we think about twenty-four-hour childcare, which we don't currently have, or extended-hour childcare, that would serve people who, who needed that, that, some, I suppose, shift workers, um, individuals who work lower, who, who are of a lower income but need that type of care but are outside of traditional hours. Is that what you were speaking to in your presentation, your comments? Is that something you'd like to see explored? Maybe as a pilot at this project or sort of moving forward in some way? Just maybe not twenty-four hours even, but extended? That's kind of what I was, I was gonna ask staff about that later on. Um, but wondering if you had some comments on that?
Yes. So, absolutely what you're describing is flexible childcare. And it's exactly what I'm suggesting that needs to happen, uh, in at least this fourth program of, uh, that's being suggested. Twenty-four-hour care is, sometimes seems like a good idea, but actually families sometimes are not, um, as likely to use it. But the extended-hours piece is very, very necessary. Also, when we talk about flexible care, we're talking about care where families might only need care every second Tuesday, or they might only need care from three A, three P.M. to six P.M. So, not the traditional full-day model. And that's the kind of innovation that we can see on this site that would meet the needs of families who work non-traditional hours.
Okay. Well, that's good information for me to have on the policy side as well. And thanks for speaking to us to, um, tonight. And I will be asking staff about that and the possibility of having that flexible space. Thank you.
Thanks so, thanks so much. Uh, and that's it for questions, uh, Ms. Gregson. So, thank you very much for, uh, calling in this evening.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to move now to, uh, Nathan Davidovic, who's the sixth speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Hi there. Please go ahead up to five minutes.
Oh, oh, you hear me? Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, this is again, one of these projects that the previous council approved and you got stuck with it and you can't really do much because, uh, you know, it's gonna be another Little Mountain. The developer paid a small deposit on the land to TransLink. And who knows when the rest of the money will be paid and how long the development will take. They said ten to twelve years. And when are all the housing going to be built and how much housing will be built? And, uh, you know, I sent you, I think, one memo with, uh, fourteen points, you know. Uh, the number-one priority if, you know, if the proper government was in, in power back in twenty sixteen was that it should be, uh, public land should stay with the government and should be, uh, either given to the city or work with the city to provide, uh, uh, proper communities like, uh, Falls Creek South and, and Champlain Heights. But we are not at that position, uh, this moment unless the new housing minister, uh, wants to, uh, uh, pay off this company and, and buy off the land, which I don't know if it's possible or not. You know, you're still trying to find out what the, what the deal was at, uh, at, at the Little Mountain. Try to find out what the deal is here. And maybe some, something can be done. But, I mean, I, I have no idea. But, uh, the, the architect was trying to compare this to Sydney and Melbourne. Well, why doesn't he compare it to Phoenix and San Francisco? In Phoenix, there's a new community built right now like this, same size of this. And the people have to sign in that they're not gonna, they're gonna move in without any cars allowed. And that's how they're gonna get, uh, you know, uh, the, the climate emergency. Nobody's going to own any car in that new community. Uh, and in San Francisco, they're just building, uh, uh, affordable housing above the transit garage. They could have still used it for a garage and just build a housing, affordable housing above. So, that architect, whatever it is, uh, should, uh, go down to the States and see what they're doing there instead of going to Australia and compare us to Australia. But, uh, you know, there's so many problems. There is a hundred and twenty sites on the Canby corridor that are right now on rezoning and development application and so forth. There is no overall transportation plan. The, the only one that I sort of saw that was somewhat good was from the Heatherland consultant. And he agreed with me that there is so many problems along the Oak Street corridor that the engineering staff in Vancouver don't want to deal with, just hoping that they'll go away somehow. They're not gonna go away. It's just gonna be a, a mess, uh, uh, in, in this area without a proper transportation plan. So, uh, as I said, uh, this is the number-two choice. The number-one choice is for the land to remain public land and to have proper, uh, new community developed by the city and the province, uh, with help is the province, uh, you know. And, um, so I don't know, uh, if it's too late now or not, but, uh, maybe somebody will ask the right questions and find out the answers from the new minister of housing. Thank you very much for, uh, your help. And, I mean, as I said, it's, it's really the previous council that you are stuck with, with all these developments in the city. And your, your hands are basically tied. And so, I'm sorry to say that.
You do have a question from councillor Hardwick? Uh, councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Davidovic. Always a pleasure hearing you. Um, you know, I've been watching this for a long time too and seeing this all unfold and, uh, take your point. Um, all of these mega developments are being done with the expectation that there's going to be a massive public, uh, uh, immigration or population growth to support it. And I'm just struggling to try and, uh, come up with any kind of driving rationale for that. Um, and yet, of course, what, what I see has, has been excess zone capacity in the, in the Canby corridor as you've described. You think it is. What, what do you think? Uh, is it just if you build it, they will come? Or do you think that there's any other driving force behind what would motivate this?
Well, I think some people will come, uh, you know, especially for the, you know, the smaller units. But, uh, the way things are going now, you have an exodus from the city all the way out to the Fraser Valley. People want to, to, to buy cheaper homes and, uh, and live comfortably. And, uh, so I wouldn't be surprised that many of these units, uh, will stay empty. Uh, I mean, uh, I forget how many, uh, apartments are sitting empty in Vancouver right now, uh, and, uh, because, uh, foreign people buying them and for investment purposes. And, and it's, it's not providing housing for the people of Vancouver. So, uh, you might be quite right that, uh, many of these units would, uh, not sell right away or not be occupied. And instead of ten years, it might take the developer fifteen or twenty years to do the whole project. And that's another good reason why this public land should be a part of the city and part of the government of B.C., that they can provide a better, affordable rental housing to the thousands of people who do need it. But, you know, that's the previous council and so forth. What can I say?
Thank you, councillor Hardwick.
Well, that didn't really answer my question, uh, but thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Well, I thought you, well...
Thanks so much. Um,
Three minutes.
Councillor, it is, uh, oh, yeah. Sorry. I thought you were, uh, completed, uh, finished there, councillor Hardwick. If you wanted to keep going, please go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify. Is it three minutes or five minutes?
Five minutes.
Okay. Great. So, I'd just like to ca- Um, Mr. Davidovic, if you're still there, I'd just like to pursue this a little bit further.
Sure.
Again, because I'm looking in this immediate area. We've got Canby corridor, we've got Oakridge, and Oakridge is coming back looking for greater density. We've got Heatherlands, we've got the, um, the, the former bus depot here. Um, I'm just trying to reconcile the kind of, of, uh, drivers to, that would be creating this kind of growth because there's nothing that I've seen to support it in, uh, the data. So, um, you watched this very carefully. You watched the prior council and their focus on the Canby corridor. And again, I'm trying, you know, as, as a keen observer of all of this process over a number of years, can you shed any further light on the driving motivation or what you, what the expectation would be, uh, to support this level of development?
Well, I mean, it's a matter of, uh, the developer thinks that he's gonna be able to make profit. And that's what's driving it, I think. I mean, there's all, there's all the apartments all the way along Canby Street at, uh, at, at twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-third and so forth. And, uh, you know, I mean, it's, they're, I presume they are taking a chance that they be able to, to fill those, all these housing units and that more and more people will, will want to buy them or, or to rent them. And, uh, but, you know, the, the possibly, especially with COVID, there'd be a turn-down in the economy and they, it will take them way much longer to, to, to do that. And, um, so they might, uh, not construct all of that. And, uh, as I said, it's the same problem what happened at, uh, at Little Mountain. They're gonna have, uh, you know, empty communities, you know. Okay.
Thank you. We're, we're at the five minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. That's it for questions, sir. Thank you, uh, for calling in this evening. Appreciate it. And we're gonna move on to the next speaker. We have Devon Husek. Just before we go to Mr. Husek, um, just getting councillors to warm up their calendars, uh, just checking with the clerks when, um, we would continue this, uh, debate and decision. Uh, I'll just let you know shortly, council. And, uh, yes, so we have Devon Husek.
All right. Uh, I'm on him.
Yep. Uh, please go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name is Devon Husek. And as you may be able to guess from my surname, I was raised by parents of Ukrainian descent. So, our home was always a little different. Sometimes our Christmas tree wasn't, uh, fully decorated until January. I think my dad might have just used this as an excuse when he was late to bring the tree in the house. But my mother's anger with him taught me that delays have consequences, like sleeping on the couch. So, while I appreciate that your efforts have increased the social housing here by ten percent, I think it may have been a better way to accomplish this goal rather than by acting at the last minute. However, I'm not here to argue about the past, but rather to speak towards the future. As I served on the city's Cherco Lands Working Group, I took an interest in the site to better fulfill my role. Though, to be clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of that body. And these are two vastly different areas of Vancouver. But I look at the quality of city planning displayed here and the enormous community benefits, and I can't help but be inspired. Of course, my relationship to this area isn't purely academic. The very first movie I saw in Vancouver was at the theater that was replaced by Crate and Barrel. On that note, I just quickly want to say how glad I am that no one asked who would be able to live here when my home was approved years ago. Otherwise, I might not be able to enjoy our city today and contribute to it. I'm also happy that living here allows me to shop at the Bay, as it's one of the only places that has clothes that suits my Eastern European and somewhat Chavita physique. Naturally, I've stopped by Van Duzen Gardens and the Jewish Community Center several times too. Frankly, the redevelopments at those sites make this one seem rather small. And arguably, all of them provide a better connection to the community than the site that's today. The nature of the fenced-off parking lot means it's kind of hard to have anything more substantial for connection unless one knows how to maintain a city bus. But this application will fix that. It's been well-woven into this changing neighborhood, and these new stores, plazas, and huge parks will surely become a focal point. But I'd like to see a bit more shops or restaurants by the daycare. After all, I'm not a young man anymore, and I can sympathize with those who would want a place to have a quick break after dropping off the kids or grandkids. I'm not old enough to claim this, and design will certainly or people my age. But it is important to design for the demands of generations to come. Already, the ample amount of transit in this area probably means that most, uh, most of the parking here will sit empty. And I think it's great that we could allow it to be better, put to better use. Either way, I don't worry about traffic congestion. But I do think we should plan for the day the R4 is at capacity too. That said, I appreciate this approved road network. It will reflect those who contribute to our city's strong foundation. We are overdue in honoring Frank Collins, a union leader, black activist, and bus driver, as well as the Nemets family. His legacy continues to brighten our city in so many different ways. It is only fitting that their stories will be reflected in this refined proposal. It will now create over one thousand homes for people of all backgrounds. It is also part of why I would strongly caution anyone who thinks this will become a ghetto to take a history lesson, if not one in cultural sensitivity. However, it is important to recognize that this site is one of the last easy opportunities to provide the housing our city needs. We'll soon run out of large malls, decaying industrial sites, or vacant government mans to transform. And in thirteen years, when the last phase of this project is finished, the dark days of COVID-19 and empty Air and B&amp;D and basin suites will be but a memory. We can't afford to wait for the next disaster. Now is the time for proactive leadership. And I believe the six pack- And I believe the Six Pecs of Plex's pilot proposal Mayor Stewart proposed earlier this year demonstrated that. When that initiative comes back for your review, I hope you all make the hard choice to try something different. But for now, I urge you to make the far easier decision and vote to, vote to approve this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Sheriff, for calling in this evening. I'm just looking and I don't see any questions from council for you, so just wanted to say thanks again for participating. I'm going to move to the next speaker who is Lena Moskaleva.
Yeah, speaking.
Hi, great, thanks. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you very much. Dear Mayor and councillors, I'm speaking on behalf of Jewish Family Services where I work as manager of care services in support of the zoning, rezoning application for what was previously the Oakridge Transit Centre. But I also want to voice our concern over the proposed number of subsidised and moderate income units. And we hope that council will consider increasing the number of these units. At Jewish Family Services, our department helps clients navigate affordable housing options in Greater Vancouver. Most of our clients feel hopeless when faced with long wait lists for subsidised housing and the realization that affordable housing is unfortunately unattainable for them. Since the beginning of 2020, we have had 63 new clients work with our housing coordinator. These new clients were added to the coordinator's caseload that already had over 100 clients who are still looking for affordable housing solutions. In addition, we've seen many of our low income Jewish clients pay extremely high rents in order to live close to their community in this area. We believe that 45 units out of the 180 rent secured ones, being geared towards those who have a moderate income is simply not enough when considering that the 30,000 to 80,000 income bracket is the average for a Vancouver household. Households who fall into this income category have an extremely difficult time finding housing since market rentals are inaccessible and most will not qualified for subsidised housing. We ask council to consider allocating all of the 180 units for moderate income families. Further, we ask council to add to the overall amount of rent secured housing units. The Oakridge Transit Centre is an opportunity to make a dent in Vancouver's affordability and homelessness crises. Therefore, we ask the council consider allotting 30% of all available units to rent, to secured rent, 30% to other social housing and 30 remaining percent to market rent units. We hope that we will be able to bring some good news to those who are simply looking for a stable home. And we thank Mayor and council for continuing to work on resolving the housing affordability crisis. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you, so just wanted to thank so much for calling in today, council. I'm looking, we, thank you. We have speaker number nine, Jim O'Day.
Hello?
Hi, Jim, you've got up to five minutes, whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thanks for permitting me to speak here tonight. I'm speaking in support of the application. This development is of a size that it can and is being developed as a major inclusive community. I've been involved for over 40 years in the development of social purpose real estate and in particular in social housing and moderate family and seniors rental housing. This project is one of the most integrated developments that I've ever seen. The aspects that resonate with me are, and I know some of these comments have been made a couple of times, but they need to be said more times. Approximately 330 units of social housing, 180 secured rental housing units, including 45 moderate, for moderate people with moderate incomes, totaling approximately 510 rental housing units on the site. There's 1,120 homeownership units, a 69 space childcare space and a two acre park, plus the 24,000 square feet of rental and commercial space. This will result in a very exceptional and inclusive neighbourhood. Social, secured housing for low and moderate income. Happiness for me is the moderate housing and lower income people being able to live in a neighbourhood and a mixed neighbourhood. Half of the social housing and 100% of the moderate housing will be built in the first phase. I haven't seen that done before. Normally it comes at the back end and I'm so happy to see that that's happening in this project in the front end. As everybody knows, the city needs more rental and in particular affordable and social housing. And this will be a great addition to our needs and the creation of an inclusive neighbourhood. Inclusive neighbourhoods create and add to a well-balanced community and an exceptional city. This is a unique opportunity for you just to vote yes, to deliver on inclusiveness and a mixed income neighbourhood for Vancouverites. Thank you.
Thanks so much. You do have some questions? Councillor Kirby Young, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. O'Day. Hello? Um, I, hi, I have a couple of questions for you, given your, you know, decades of experience, as you put it. And I'd like to sort of tap into that on the social housing piece and I appreciated your comments, you said this is one of the most integrated that you've seen. But I'm particularly interested, you talked about some of the moderate income units being delivered earlier on, but the social housing units and some of those turnkey don't come in until phase two or three. Based on your experience in doing projects, do you think there's a way to deliver some of those earlier? I posed the same question to the applicant.
Yes, I actually went and checked with that because I, because you always see, not always, but many times you see them coming in, you know, at the back end. And I went and asked that question, actually. I phoned the developer and asked them. And they're doing the moderate income and the affordable in the beginning and half of the social housing. The other half comes in, I think it's at the next phase. So, so you're, you know, it all will be built at, you know, in the first couple of years, what half of it will be.
Okay, and based on your experience, is that a pretty good timing and sort of delivery ratio for the social pieces, the social turnkey units?
Well, actually, it's, it's better than, than normal. Normally what happens is that you, you know, you'll get a lot of the market condos built first and then, of course, they get sold and then the housing, the social housing will come in. So this one got half the social housing coming in and then there's some other stuff and then the other half is going to be done. And, you know, so you got like, in phase one, it goes up right away. And I think that, I think actually there was a comment made about the CACs, but the CACs would have to be paid anyway. So they're doing this one on the, on the front end. So I think that's good.
Okay, and a follow-up question, and I'm just interested in your opinion, again, given your experience in the sector around the ratio of the total housing units, social housing that the city is getting. And, you know, you mentioned the 1,120 homeownership and the 180 secured market rentals. So we're getting 330 total social housing units and includes the 175 delivered turnkey by the applicant. How do you think the ratio stacks up on this project?
Actually, I think that when you sent the thing back, and I'm going more by the comment that was made by the planner, you've gotten actually more than, than in most projects. When you looked at the project and then sent it back, planning and real estate were able actually, you know, it appears, negotiate a better deal. Now granted, they gave some height, you know, to the developer, but you actually got more on a percentage basis, basis, it appears to me that you got a higher percentage than is the norm. If you go in and square footage and, and multiply it out and divide it, you got a higher, you got a better deal.
Okay. And then my final question for you, as you said that this is one of the most integrated projects that you've seen, can you comment on what you believe the importance to be of integrated communities as opposed to sort of social housing on, you know, dedicated sites and strata on dedicated sites or rental on separate sites? Can you comment on, you know, what you think the benefit of integrated communities like this are?
Well, well, I, I say, like, I'm, I happen to be one of the people who think they, you know, having, you know, low income and medium income and higher income and having them mixed in the same community, you know, is a good thing for, for everybody. You know, it's a good thing, it's great for the children, good for the adults. That's not to say that you, you'll ever get away from having, you know, like a, a very high income neighbourhood or a very low income neighbourhood, but the best neighbourhoods are the ones that are integrated.
Okay, do you want to expand on that in the last couple of seconds I have? Why is that? Why do they are the best?
Just 20 seconds.
Well, it just, it gives people the opportunity to meet and be integrated. Like I, I ask people all the time who are employed, how many unemployed people do they know? Not many, like, because they don't live together. You need to live in the same neighbourhoods.
Great, thank you, Mr. O'Day. Thanks for speaking.
Thanks. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, hi, Jim.
Hi, Jim.
This, the speaker before you was basically pleading for more low income housing. And when I look at the numbers in this, the strata versus the rental and social, it looks like it's about one-third for middle income, two-thirds for upper, not really upper, but fairly upper, not like, say, Falls Creek South, which was one-third, one-third, one-third. So my question is, you know a lot about housing, what could be done to increase the percentage of units that were affordable to lower income people in a project like this?
Well, on the, on the one that the city owns the land and the developers make as building the project, it'll be how much the city wants to get for its, it's either lease value or its annual lease. But if they leave, if they put the land in, which they got for a zero anyway, if they put that in and then the developer builds the housing, you can't get 100% really low income Jane, because there won't be enough money to operate the building. But you could achieve a higher percentage of very low income people.
Yeah, that would be good.
That's a council, that's a council decision.
Yeah, I understand that. That would be a way of increasing the affordability for the units, the social housing units that are there. Can you think of a way to increase the affordability for the housing units that aren't social housing or to increase the number of social housing, something so that we could get more affordability?
Yeah, yeah. What you would have to do is that with, like, half the units are going to be built and built by the developer. So they're, you know, they're going to be built within the CACs basically. So they're going to be, that building will be cheap. But if you do that and you house all low income people in the other building, you're going to have to try and get a program out of the provincial government or the federal government or the cost to build them, you'll have the, you won't have the subsidies available and you won't be able to house the people. So you'll have to go in for one of the B.C. housing or C.M.E.T. programmes, because if you have to bill it and pay for it, you know, you can't, you can't, you can't house low income people in it. They can't afford the rents, just for heat.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sorry, is that it, Jane? Or sorry, councillor Swanson?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thanks so much. Council, that's the end of the list. I am going to start my calls now. And so I'm making the first call for speakers. The number is 1-883-538-610, code 25035 hashtag. Clerks, do we have anybody on the line?
Mayor Stewart, yes. I understand there is a speaker on the line, Hugh Fraser.
Okay, great. Mr. Fraser, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me, your worship?
Yes, I can. Up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Just wanted to say that this is a very impressive development from a planning perspective, but being a resident in the area, I have a number of questions that I didn't see addressed in the report and I think it would be useful if, if staff could address some of these questions. One of the things that we're noticing in the Canby Corridor right now is the extensive traffic delays. Currently, most of the lanes are blocked and there's a single lane for traffic to get through southbound a lot of the time with the Canby Corridor study. So my first question is what will be done to minimize construction impact on 44, 41st Avenue? And I trust that the full access will be provided for rapid bus as well as vehicle traffic throughout the whole construction period. My next question is how many parking spaces will be provided on the site? It wasn't specified in the report. I'm curious as well. Thirdly, has the city done an overall transportation study that accounts for all of the developments in this area? Canby Corridor, Heatherlands, this site, Oakridge, the hospital sites and the school sites and some of the extensive development that's coming into this area? And finally, I'm just curious, I didn't see in the report, what is the predicted traffic generation from this site? And how will that generation impact both in the short term and longer term transit and/or tiered roads and intersections? So it would be useful to have some answers to those questions, but in general, I'd be supportive of this development. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. I don't see any questions from councillors, so I'll just thank you for your participation this evening. I am going to make my second call now for, for speakers. The code is 1-833-353-8610, code 25035 hashtag. And clerks, is there anybody on the line for this item?
None for this item.
Okay, I'm going to make my third call, council. 1-833-353-8610, code 25035 hashtag. This is available on Twitter and the live stream of all these numbers. And I am now going to take a five-minute break, council. We're at 9:45, so we should have time to. Go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
I just wanted to know, you had mentioned you would come back with the date and time that we would continue this?
It all depends if we close the speakers list.
I understand it, I was just, well, and if we continue past 10, so just was wondering what that date was for those who were thinking of joining.
It's either tomorrow or Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And so we're, we'll take the five minutes, council, and we'll be back at 9:53. And so we'll take the five minutes, counsel, and we'll be back at nine fifty-three.
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, I'm just double-checking, and I am hearing there is no one, no one on the line.
Thanks. So we're gonna close the speakers' list, and we've received no public comments on this item after five PM, so we're gonna close to receive the public comments. We are at nine fifty-two, counsel, after a long day, so I'm suggesting we recess and we move this item, to hear closing comments from the applicant, to ask questions of staff, and to debate this application. And I believe the clerk said it could be tomorrow as unfinished business?
Motion to continue tomorrow as unfinished business, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, just checking with the clerk.
Okay, this is the clerk here. Where the option council has Mayor Stewart is you could defer, close the speakers' list, which you've done, and you could defer or refer closing comments from the staff and applicant as well as debate and decision to the council meeting following the standing committee meeting for tomorrow, which would mean you could adjourn the public hearing.
Okay, let's do that. Is that okay? Thank you, Counselor DeJinova. Do we have a seconder for that?
Counselor Boyle.
I heard Counselor Boyle. All in favor, say yay.
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 Oppose, say nay. Great, okay, so we can adjourn now, so I can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwork. Counselor DeJinova, second. All in favor of adjourning, say yay.
Yay.
Oppose, say nay. Great, so we're adjourned. Thank you very much, counsel. Long day. Thank you very much to clerks and staff for everything tonight, and we will see counsel tomorrow morning at nine thirty.